Okay, it being seven o'clock, I'd like to call the May seventh, twenty twenty five Planning, Charlton Planning Board Meeting to order. First thing on the agenda, first item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing for GM Properties LLC Villages multi-family units at thirty-five North Main Street, uh, thirty-five dash C dash nine, and this is the second supplemental, this is um, this has been noticed and everything else and and okay. Um, so I do have a, a note here to, to hold off on the hearings.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah. We see the information from tax, what today, this is a pass to unpaid taxes.
Um.
Okay.
Who they're in the rear just this time. So until taxes make current the planning board, not the, the.
Okay, I, I, I understand if that's the case, I will inform the applicants and have them take care of it. Okay, yeah, cause I don't know if everybody heard that, this is for the GM Properties LLC Villages on thirty-five North Main Street. We will not be opening the public hearing tonight, we will not be holding it and it'll be probably, do we, do we need to wait until the taxes are paid before we can reschedule or do you want to?
Open it.
Okay, so can't reschedule yet, what about notifications, so um, the public will need to be notified if we, can we, can we postpone the pro, the, the hearing for two weeks?
Yeah, let's, let's put it in two weeks, if something comes up then we'll change that.
Okay, so um, I'm gonna need a motion to postpone the public hearing for GM Properties LLC until the twenty-first of May. Make a motion to postpone the GM Properties, uh, hearing until the twenty-first of May. The motion second?
Second.
Your motion is second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Enjoy your night. Nice board though.
Okay, next on the agenda, seven o'clock, public hearing for proposed zoning and bylaw and map amendments for the upcoming town meeting. Um, so I will read the public hearing notice and we can go from there, so in accordance with section two hundred dash one dot five of the Charlton zoning, zoning bylaw, the Charlton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May seventh, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. Via Zoom meeting, meeting ID number two-one-one-two-nine-three-two-two-five-seven and in-person meeting at thirty-seven Main Street Charlton, Mass, oh, and five oh seven, the proposed change sections of the zone to, on the proposal to change sections of the zoning bylaw. One, add definition to section two hundred dash two dot one flea markets and other definitions required. Two, require for accessory dwelling units in two hundred dash two dot one, two hundred dash three dot two B and add new section two hundred dash five dot X X related changes. Deleting footnotes of intensity use table two hundred dash three dot two by deleting and inserting a new paragraph under section two hundred dash three dot three B paragraphs eight to thirteen and other related changes. Four, amending the allowed uses in the use regulate, regulation table, section two hundred dot three dot two B and other related changes. Five, amending regulations related to reduced frontage lots sections two hundred dash five dot thirteen and other related changes. Six, amending regulations related to village districts section two hundred dash five dot seventeen and other related changes. Seven, amending regulations relating to the administrative, administrative provision section and two hundred dash seven dot one and two hundred dash seven dot two and other related changes. Eight, amending the zoning map on the community business uh, between one seventy-nine Worcester Road and Oxford Town Line and other related changes. Amending the language of section two hundred dash three dot one, paragraph C or D regarding split zoned lots and other related changes. Copies of the proposed changes are available for inspection of the planning board office and the town first office during regular business hours. The application is also posted on the town website under the planning board. The meeting of the Charlton Planning Board will be conducted in person and we will be able to watch via Zoom using Zoom information provided, specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public indoor parties with right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found in the town of Charlton website at W W W dot town of charlton dot net. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen, watch the meeting may do so in the following manner. Video participation that each at zoom dot U S slash two-one-one-two-nine-three-two-two-five-seven, meeting ID two-one-one-two-nine-three-two-two-five-seven. Phone access one six four six five five eight eight six five six. Don't play chat. Thank you. Okay. So, we can begin um going over the proposed changes. Kurt, do you want to leave the discussion or do you want to? Would you like me to go through each one of these five?
I would suggest that it is the board's public hearing, that you and I, the board and I have worked on these items over the past several months and that not, it might, but might best be if the board took each section one at a time and as for any public comment, I am trying to reserve comment because I've told you everything and you already.
Okay, so we can go through it one, one at a time, um, and look for comments as we go through, so um, the first zoning bylaw amendment was to amend a new section related to accessory dwelling units, so the um the definition for accessory apartment was removed and replaced with accessory dwelling unit or A D U. Um. The text of which continues here. Um, accessory dwelling unit A D U is self-contained housing unit inclusive, inclusive, the inclusive of sleeping, cooking and sanitary facilities on the same lot as the principal dwelling. Subject to otherwise applicable dimensional parking setbacks, lot coverage and other requirements of this bylaw. Um, and add the gross floor area, the sum of all areas of all stories of the building of compliant ceiling height pursuant to the building code include basements, lofts, intermediate floor tiers, measures, measured from the interior faces of exterior walls or from the center line of wall separating buildings or dwelling units but excluding crawl spaces, garage parking spaces, attics, enclosed porches and similar spaces where there are multiple principal dwellings on the lot and G F A gross footage area of the largest principal dwelling unit shall be used to determine the maximum size of the protected use A D U. Footprint area of the ground that is covered by the structure or the structures on a building lot include the foundations and all areas enclosed by exterior walls, fittings and or covered by roofing, so those are the definitions that have been added. Any questions?
Hi, thank you, I'm a problem asking. Sunset Drive, a question on the um, the gross floor area, so you're actually gonna count for instance, the seller's square footage is living gross floor area is living space towards what's allowed to be built to the right nine hundred fifty square feet or four hundred, if we're not in the building happens to have a seller. Would you want to count the seller's square footage as square footage? Kurt, you got the answer?
Yes.
Yes, yes, that definition comes out of the statute and the regulation on in place proposed or in place and current regulations of the Affordable Housing Community Act.
So yeah. So that's where it comes from, doesn't necessarily mean it's because it comes from there, doesn't mean it makes sense, you know what I'm saying?
I'm not gonna argue with sense, Mr. Lemansky.
Yeah, it's, you tell the dog to go down the solid, that's, the dog's square footage, but livable space, you, you hear what I'm saying?
All right, it works, it works in the applicant's favor because if we're using a factor to determine the size of the A D U, the more you have in the dwelling unit, the larger the A D U can be.
So what you're saying is this, this will also carry over to the, the existing structure that's already on the property?
And I think the best thing to do, I'm sorry to, you know, to do this, but when you, you have to look at any bylaw in a whole.
Yep.
Okay, and there are some other requirements and um, provisions further down.
Okay.
That's this, this, but yes, does it make sense? Well, it was written by the legislature.
Yes. I didn't know that. Hmm. Just ask a general question, this came about because of the law that states passed as far as making these uh, new units allowable.
Yes.
The town, so um, if in fact, the town does not, the voting people at town meetings does not, they do not adopt this, then we still stay the same rule that we have. Correct? Or is the state saying you have to do, do this?
Yeah. The twelve, so the state has said that we cannot unreasonably regulate nor prohibit attached or detached accessory dwelling units.
Okay, so that's the, that's the huge change, right? Got it, got it, thank you.
Every town in Massachusetts is dealing with this whole thing rewriting their bylaws because of the state law because they all have some kind of accessory, you know, apartments. Okay, any other questions on definition T? Uh, add section two hundred dash five dot X X, so accessory dwelling units, the purpose, the purpose of accessory dwelling units A D bylaw is to align with the minimum requirements of M G L C forty A sections one A, number three and seven sixty C M R section seventy-one, so provide homeowners with the means of attending um, to tenants and accessory apartments rental income companionship, security and services and thereby enabling them to stay more comfortable in their homes, neighborhoods where they might otherwise be forced to leave, provide a mixture of housing that responds to changing family needs and smaller households. Four, provide a broader range of accessible and more affordable housing. B, the requirements must comply with other applicable laws and regularly, regulations, including but not limited to the Massachusetts State Building Electrical Plumbing, Gas and Energy Codes, Wetland Protection Act, Board of Health Regulations and Utility Connections. Two, the principal dwelling and or the accessory dwelling unit may not be sold separately for the property that it's located on. Three, may not have more than one property and may not be used for short-term rentals as defined in M G L C sixty-four G section one. May be attached to or create an existing residential dwelling or its detached garage, outbuildings and newly created dwelling or detached building or as standalone building, building and must be on the same lot as the principal dwelling unit. Five, may have a separate entrance either directly from the outside or through an entry hall or corridor shared with a principal dwelling sufficient to meet the requirements of the state building code for safe egress. But attached to a principal dwelling unit, the gross floor area and footprint of the A D U is limited to uh, one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet and be designed to maintain the appearance of a single-family residence. When created as an existing or new accessory structure, the gross floor area of the A D U is limited to nine hundred square feet or one-half the living area of the principal dwelling unit, whichever is less. The footprint of the accessory dwelling structure containing the A D U shall not be larger than one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet.
And it's, it's very interesting having someone read what I've written.
And you found something?
I found two things. Um, back under B, number two.
Good.
It says four and it should be from the property that it's located on.
From?
Okay, and.
Different from, okay.
Right. And um, as we just had a discussion about the gross floor area, it's not the living area, but it is the gross floor area that the number is based on. Uh, and where was that? I'm sorry, number seven, the nine hundred square feet for one and a half could be the gross floor area of the principal dwelling.
If I may suggest to Kurt on number three. May not have more than one per property. Uh, shouldn't it be called, wouldn't it be clearer if it would be called an additional dwelling unit in A W?
It may not have more than one.
May not have one, one additional dwelling unit.
I'm sorry.
For a property. And that way there it's crystal clear.
So we may not have more than one A D U per property.
Okay, I see.
What do you think about that? Again, that's only a suggestion.
The, this, you know, the, the, this is a public hearing for the public to provide another look at what we've worked on and you have a new set of eyes and, and, you know, appreciate anyone that can bring clarity, so.
On number six, perhaps we could point some in between the twelve fifty square feet and the be designed twelve hundred fifty square feet and shall be designed to.
I have no problem with that.
Okay. Out of curiosity, what's the definition of short-term?
Um, it's whatever is in the, I don't know, uh.
Thirty days or less.
Uh, usually.
Yeah.
There's.
You can't do like an Airbnb or something like that, but I thought you could, can separately deed it if you condominiumize it.
No, it can't be, has to be sold together.
Is there a law against that though with the condominiumizing of them? Like separately deed the principal property and the A D U as condo? The regulation and the law as I understand it.
Yeah, okay.
Said they cannot be sold separately.
Okay, here it is.
And I don't mean that because uh, I've got a little experience with this. There's nothing preventing someone who has multiple buildings with multiple units in them, where you have one piece of property and creating a master key to pondo those and then they spend as a condo, they become separate to be sold.
Correct?
Yeah, you're getting out of my league.
It's not the idea of the law thing.
Yeah, let's, let's not go down the rabbit hole of what ifs and you could stick with what we have, okay, so any other questions, comments on those? Um, eight. Okay, so I'll move on to amend the use regulation table, um, does everybody have a copy of this account? No. Um. So uh, we're, the, the, we're going to add um, residential uses uh in the, the eight districts that we have, so eight um eight dwellings in one families, yes in A, yes in R forty, yes in ours uh, S E, yes in N B, yes in D, yes in C B, no in I G and no in V P.
There's no changes there.
No changes there.
Can we, can we just go to the changes?
Sure, yep, that would be much, much quicker, so um, multi-family dwellings, the only thing we did change was from a, in B E P um changing special permit to no. So that was allowed by special permit. Uh, multi-family dwellings in B E P would not be permitted. Major residential development, um, once again, changing from special permit in B E P to not allowed. Dwellings units over the first floor business use, uses, once again, B E P special permit to not allowed. And one, in one and two family dwellings, mix of residential and business uses from S P to not allowed, so they, the, the, the object of this is to prevent um residential building in the B E P district that's mainly for business enterprise parks and, and not for mixed development, which we do allow in community business and in some of the other zones, so strictly business parks. Um, and, and what else? Questions?
Just call your attention to speed when you change it from accessory apartments to accessory dwellings, just in what.
Thank you. So accessory dwelling units, uh, do, 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 we did that, we did that, yeah, okay, was there any other comments?
Um, I, I, I know this is a little out of bounds here, but I, I really have a problem with major residential development. I was in our zoning bylaws and the purpose of it, which I don't understand the purpose of it because if you're doing uh, if, if you're a landowner and, and you own a piece of land that's a hundred acres and three thousand feet of road furniture, what happens is if, if you break it out five or more lots becomes a major residential development and the requirements of major residential development are identical to a subdivision, which is the most stringent uh, type of uh, authority that you have to go through. And that's why, again, I, I, I just don't agree with major residential development, for instance, there was this case um over by uh, Cranby Meadow. Father came in, I think it was from Shrewsbury, did five lots, he ended up having to put in a um a water storage tank of fire suppression. Uh, is it a good idea? Of course it's a good, good idea, do I think it's over the top and beyond? I, that's, that's, that's where, where I'm coming from, I don't think as, as far as the right of a landowner that you have the ability to do A and I's, no problem. But you better not do more than four, because if you do, then you, then you're going to the big boy pool and now you're doing a subdivision and you've got to do all kinds, again, it can be required by planning board and all the planning, planning board can waive them if, if they're asked, but it's, it's just a huge expense to go through, uh, and again, I, I've I'm kind of one of those Boston teapot guys, I just think it's against your regular uh, rights as far as a landowner, the subdivision property. Subdivision, I understand if I'm talking about, you know, A, A, A and I.
Yep, but we're, we're talking about just the changes that we're making now.
I'm just saying.
We can, we've got a master plan.
Exactly.
Love, love that part of that then.
I'm sorry.
If we keep, yeah, thank you, if we keep that holding down, we're, we're gonna be here till midnight.
Yeah, the master plan will happen.
Yep.
Soon.
Yeah, okay.
I apologize.
That's all right, that's all right, you know, noted, but I, I, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
Um, next, uh, to, to, next on the list is are we done, we're done with A D U's, right? Any last questions about A D U's or? Or someone? Okay, yeah, um, now we have two changes, well, we have a map change on Worcester Road, um, I don't know if everybody has a copy of this. Um, yeah, so previously, currently, I should say, um, the C B development around the, along the north side of Worcester Road um is cut some lots in half, all we're doing is adjusting the C B zone lines to the existing lot lines on those lots that they cross through, so it's making that area a little bit bigger and, and redefining those lots that are already C B now to be fully inclusive of that C B zone. So with the, the previous, there's the new map.
Oh, no, I'm, okay, thank you, though.
Any questions or interest there? Understanding that cover, cover it? Kurt?
Yeah, what's your mind?
Okay. No comments? And then see one, and we can move on. Um, so the next section, uh, section two hundred dash three dot two D. The notes, the fine print notes at the bottom of the um, of the bylaw were removed and those notes were added under the appropriate sections um, for each of those um, bylaws and, and, and the usage, usages, so we can go through each one individually. Um. Or we can basically show what, what they have been changed to and where they've been put, are those highlighted within the, that section?
Or the package that was available for inspection has the um, blocks outs, bits, and then the basically ninety-nine percent of it, they've lined the same language rearranged in full-size text for easier reading and clarity in section supposedly reading the whole bunch of little footnotes.
Um, has everybody had a chance to look at those?
Following along with Kurt, Kurt, the only real change is in, in Village, minimum building coverage.
The, the board did um and as we've had some experience with multiple dwelling units on single lots.
Yep.
Um, it's very tight to put a, a duplex on a ten thousand square foot lot and have sufficient area for parking. So the, the board suggested that five thousand square feet and then that would also apply um, probably in the case of a, it would apply in the case of a multi-family dwelling that which is similar to what we do when the R forty's on. I think you'd be aware, but in the R forty's on, we ask for an additional twenty thousand square feet area for the second dwelling.
Okay, but what, as I look at the, the schedule here, I only see three change, changes and they're all in Village. I assume that the red, the red indicates a change, correct? The red after.
Oh, let me see your thought, I'm just.
I can circle two out of the three.
For the.
Yeah, so, so we remove all of these little.
Correct.
Footnotes are being removed.
Right.
Okay, and that's all of these.
Right.
And then replaced by the text that follows on, and you're correct, and we, the board that that we should increase the size when we have multiple dwelling units in the villages, that's just.
So that was a change at the Village, Village, um.
Yeah.
Initial five thousand square feet of contiguous land areas required for each dwelling unit to be on the first group dwelling unit.
Could we um, outline for um, residents if, and maybe put it in bed or something if we changed the, because we took a lot of, a lot of these notes were just like taken out and put in.
Yeah.
Maybe we highlight.
Highlight, highlight the changes.
Like that dived out, you know, like just the, just so we're fully transparent.
Yep, yep, it's, it's, it's difficult to see what was changed in, in each of these.
It looks great, this is such an improvement, but maybe it just.
Have to be careful. Trying to figure out a suggestive way to do it because strike through means a certain thing consistently in the years that we've done. You know, underline means new, so I guess we could say, you know, underline is five thousand square feet as new.
And the rest of it is all just verbiage from, from the notes.
Notes, yeah.
Move, move out to the appropriate sections.
I just don't want anybody to say, oh, you threw that in there and, and, and there was, we clearly voted on it and everything, but it's just.
Yep.
I'm taking notes as, and best I can and I blocked out time tomorrow morning.
Okay.
To whatever the board votes is their final draft to get it together so that it can get published, published in our meeting one.
Okay, okay, thank you. Everybody agree there?
Yeah.
Um. Is there a need to go through each of these individually? It's the only change that's in that section.
I don't, it's, I don't know, so you.
Page, uh, so those, those notes, uh, fine print notes, um, cover pages seven, eight and nine, right? It's seven, eight, nine and ten.
Hundred and, yeah.
Up, or up to, up to ten. You okay there, moving on?
Yeah.
Any questions? Nope, hearing done, we'll move on. So zoning bylaw minute, amendment, village district requirements and related, so what this section. So zoning bylaw amendment, amendment, village district requirements and related. So what this section does is section two hundred dash five dot seventeen C two. Um, removed. That section for the public sidewalk information and we change it to be. Uh, number two, so public sidewalk construction, if no public sidewalk exists. Across the front of the lot or across the street, concrete sidewalk of at least five feet and with. And granite curbing shall be provided within the municipal right of way as approved by the highway superintendent. So i- if, if you're building and there's no sidewalk, you must build one to maximize possible sidewalk. Shall be designed to create a continuance pedestrian walkway with the abutting, with the abutting properties. Where the sidewalk construction is not feasible or practical, the town may require an applicant to provide a sidewalk in another location. Or make a payment and move sidewalk construction to the Town of Charlton Special Sidewalk Fund in the amount determined. Sidewalk curving, sub base and a potential, uh, after turn said, there it is.
T G for you to say.
Yeah, will be constructed in accordance with Massachusetts Highway Department of Standard Specifications for Highways Bridges, uh, and bridges. As most recently revised. Does that mean bridges and bridgers?
Bridges.
There we go. If the existing sidewalk is across the street, crosswalks may be required. Uh, a waiver of public sidewalk construction requirements may be granted by the planning board. Um, amend section two hundred dash five dot seventeen C by exempting single-family duplex homes from the fifty percent window area. By deleting the language struck through and relocating. Amending and inserting new language. So except for single-family and duplex homes. A minimum fifty percent of the walls of the ground force based directly facing streets. Shall have transparent windows and door openings placed at eye level of pedestrians. Between three feet and eight feet above grade. The planning board may waive this standard for redevelopment if compliance would create economic hardship or cause undesirable changes to the facade of the building. Um, to allow people to see interesting things inside, building fixed interior shall not be obstructing use of the building. So I mean, the whole, the, the whole idea of the village district was to create. Kind of a shopping area with mixed residential, um, uses. So. That was trying to keep it, it looking that way. Um, we're just continuing that and, and, uh. Pulling that requirement away from residential, strictly residential buildings.
My comment on this seems, uh. The statement that you want fifty percent. Of the wall space. To be transparent. So that from the outside you can see inside. Is, is that for the benefit of peeping toms?
So it's, 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 it's not residential construction, it's, it's commercial construction.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's, it's not for residential. That's, we're, we're, we're removing residential from that requirement.
Right, right. And the next thing I think of is. Downtown New York City where they pull garage doors down over the glass.
Hopefully, we'll, hopefully, we'll never need that. This is Charlton and, and hopefully that's, that, you know, that's, that's kind of with the, the, the. What we have in, in some parts of, of that area. So just continuing on that.
Here with me, can we back up? For the left, the section here on public sidewalks.
Yep.
On A, it talks about, uh. With, and they talk about granite curbing shall be provided within the municipal, uh, public way. And then if we found. Further and talks about.
What's not feasible?
A way that can be granted. Uh. By the planning board. I think, again, the thing is, is.
So the, the waiver would be granted in, 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 in lieu of building the, the sidewalk. Um. And if you look at C, where it's not, where construction is not feasible or practical, the makes time to require the applicant provide. Sidewalk in another location or make a payment.
Right.
Of, of what that would be. So if it's, if it's a sidewalk going nowhere. Um, it may be, uh, advisable to, to pay into that fund so that a sidewalk, a complete sidewalk can be built. At a later time.
Right, just. Wha-what goes on in my head is just having. The recall of a year and a half ago of having to install granite. And it made common sense right on the radiuses where things do take, take a beating. And as well as what takes a beating is your checkbook.
Mm-hmm.
The, the G word, and it doesn't stand for break either. Um. So that's why when we go down to the number D. Is that then you, I don't, I don't know what the highway standards say. Uh. Because do the state highway standards call for granite? Just on regular curbing?
Yes.
Yes?
Look at Route twenty between Charlton and Oxford. All granite curbing. Main street here, so it's granite.
Yes, I've looked at portions of Route twenty here in Charlton, it's not granite. Now, the new section where we got the federal government paying ninety percent of the bill, of course you ought to grant it. But again, if the state's paying for it, you don't see it. So I'm just saying that. If I, I, I look at the position of, of, of. Of the one who's developing, thank you, the one who's paying for this is saying. You know, is it nee- needed or is, especially when you've got situations to where. Uh, our own town, not picking on our town, but even the state. Does not necessarily do granite every, every time. And the. The standard used to be from a legal point of view, that, that a town can require you to do something that they themselves don't do. That to you stand, but who the hell wants to go to court?
So the, the.
I'm, I'm just saying this further on in, in our. Meaning our Charlton, um. Bylaws, there's a section in, in there to where it says the planning boards. This may waive the use of granite. In fact, sometimes, uh, the, uh, the. Tape card burn is better for, for snow plowing because you plow right up and over it. If you don't believe me, the, the, uh, when, when you're coming through twelve and twenty, coming from right where, uh, the, the. Uh, the restaurant is there by the old mass tent truck. So the plow hit a granite, uh, uh. Head is over, over a catch basin and slid it in half.
Yep, yep. So, so what is your suggestion on changing? Is your suggestion to remove granite?
No, not remove it, just be able to.
Well, we have that, we have that in there, waiver of the construction.
But it's not on number six.
Um, it is on F, A, section two F, the whole, the whole thing.
Waiver of public sidewalk construction where requirements may be granted. Uh, by the point we go. So the, so that statement tells us everything.
Yes.
From, from A, A to E.
Yep.
I'm happy. Thank you.
Good. Um.
Once you get in a bad mood and they come in front of you saying. Then I get in the way. Thanks, sorry.
Come early in the evening, that's the key.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, okay, that was, uh, singular duplex homes for village district zoning bylaw amendment, section three, uses and intensity regulations. Uh, to see if the town will amend the zoning bylaw section two hundred dash three dot one C, deleting the language struck through. And relocating, amending, and inserting new language with numbering and layout determination by general code consistent. With the zoning bylaw format to see if the town will vote of, just, it might.
You're fine.
Keep going?
Yeah.
Okay. See if the town will vote for men zoning by law section two hundred dash three dot D by inserting another, another divided lots. Where boundary of zoning districts divide a lot having frontage on a street in less than restricted district. The provisions of this bylaw covering the less restricted portion of the lot. May extend not more than twenty-five feet within the lot beyond the district boundaries. Where the boundary of the district divides a lot having frontage on a street in a more restricted district. The provisions of this bribe law covering the more restricted portion of the lot shall extend to the entire lot. Where a strict district boundary encompasses thirty-three percent or less of a lot. District line will follow the lot lines for the purpose of this section. The districts in descending order of more restricted to less restricted are floodplain. Agriculture, rural residential, lower density residential. Residential, small enterprise, neighborhood business, village district, community. Business, business enterprise park, and industrial general.
So I said I wasn't going to say much, but I just want to make. Clear here to everyone is. The only changes within this section is, is the addition of the language where a district boundary encompasses thirty-three percent or less of the lot. The district lot line will follow the lot line. So we've had some issues where we've had some little diagonal cuts of a lot. It's difficult to deal with. And when we added village district a number of years ago. To our zoning table, we didn't put it in the hierarchy of less to more density. The village district didn't.
Any questions, concerns, issues? Okay. Zoning by law amendment section two hundred dash five dot thirteen reduced front lots to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning by law section two hundred dash five dot thirteen. Deleting the language structure, relocating, amending, and inserting new language with numbering and layout determined by general code consistent with zoning by law format. So. Um, a reduced frontage lot may be created and excluded from existing minimum frontage requirements. Planning board authorizes the creation of the lot by special permit of for reduced frontage, reduce, reduce lot frontage. In accordance with the regulations and requirements set forth below. Such lots shall only be permitted in the agriculture and low-density residential zoning districts. So we don't expect, we, we, we don't allow reduced frontage lots in anything other than A and R forty. Um, the change here to the requirements. Was, uh, the building was changed to structures setback lines should be minimum of two hundred feet from the front of the property line was added. And the reduced frontage access strip portion of the lot cannot exceed six hundred feet in length. And then what was added was after which the lot must conform to the zone's frontage requirements. So that reduced frontage portion can only go six hundred feet into the lot. Any questions?
Well, that one, one comment is, um, I remember it had been what, twelve, fourteen years this bylaws brought, brought in when Alan Boyd was here. I know, um. I participated with, with them on, you know. Encouraging this, but what I've seen is. The property owners to go and take their properties. And do multiple. Reduced frontage lots on the original piece of property. And it seems like it's almost abusing. The, the, uh, the, the bylaw. To where they're abusing it. Not as a shield, but as a sword. Is, um. I know the town of Brookfield has, has something in there. It's two things, is you can't do more than, than, than one, one of a lot and also, um. There's another section in, in, in there about, uh. Uh, that you, we only get one bite of the apple. So. I'm just asking the planning board, maybe you should give that some consideration if it's not this time, but next time. As far as the reduced frontage lots, I think, uh, uh, you were. Available, I think it was a couple of years ago. Uh, where, where you had this crazy. Weapon thing and it's gone this way and that way and it ended up, uh, getting four buildable lots out of something that was.
Of old Spencer rugby.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was kind of junk. And I mean, like I said to Alan, you was going, it's Alan, the good part is you got people. Who, who have, have land and they, 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 they want it, they want their, their son and daughter each to have a lot. And now you're encouraging them to do a subdivision, they're going to end up doing fifteen lots. So why not just allow something like this? And, uh, but anyways.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we, we may want to look back in the master plan, you know, and, and talk about that. But yeah, I, I, I understand where you come from. I have seen. Quite a few of that come through.
Yeah.
Nothing as strange as the one you were referring to, but there are other lots that have, uh, that have come through like that. So, um. Any, any comments about the verdict verbiage there? That change? Okay, the next one, uh, zoning amendment by law section seven administration. Um, so to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning by law two hundred dash seven. Deleting the language struck through and relocating, amending, and inserting new language with numbering, the layout determined by general code. Consistent with zoning by law form. So in two hundred dash seven dot one D, uh. E, so. All uses in those district where site plan approval is required is struck through and changed to all uses. Which a special permit is required. So this is dealing with special permits. Um, in, in this section. Um. Uh, to, to two hundred dot seven dot two, um, just a. Is that just a spelling correction?
No, this is a new, this is a new section.
Okay, this is all a new section?
It is.
Okay.
That gave the, gives the planning board.
Okay.
Some criteria, measurable criteria. To use to, um, consider when granting a special permit.
Okay. Um, you want to, how?
You should underline it, right? Right?
Yeah, you're going to underline anything new or do you want to italicize anything new and cross out every, anything?
Well, it's, it's all new, so.
Okay, all right, but, but still it, it might make more sense.
So we, I, I got it. We need to go through and I need to go, it's easy, right?
Okay.
Word is wonderful, right? It's easy. I can put underlines on and ship it up to Andrew.
Beats a typewriter, that's for sure.
I do. The memoryograph guy.
So, uh, two hundred dash seven dot two, unless otherwise addressed by the law, by, by the bylaw, the planning board shall use the following criteria for granting a special permit. Um, so we're just really clarifying what requires special permit and, and, uh, and how we. Judge that. So. It, uh, one, it provides an opportunity for service beneficial to the community as a whole. The proposal does not result in an unreasonable no noise, odor, or glare. The lot size provides more than reasonable setbacks to buildings, structures, and accessory uses, including parking or loading areas. And does not result in traffic exceeding the capacity of the roadway and is shown by a traffic study performed by a registered professional. Um, you want to put if required?
I think if you're doing something of this size.
It's required.
You're going to need the traffic study. You need to. Have that data to show that it, the roadway has the capacity.
But.
I mean, the plan will have a special number. Particular projects that you need a traffic study, but they need a special grant, busy telling the activity provider.
Yeah, that.
Is actually a good thing.
Or a party, yeah. Uh, any questions, comments there?
So we're saying a special permit requires a traffic study?
It could require a professional's. Traffic study.
It could.
Could.
Depending on where it is or.
Depending on where it is and what it is.
Yep.
Okay, that's almost why I would, I would want to change that to. May be required. And not all cases, not all special permits I can require a, a traffic set.
Right, if it's not on the road. I mean, on a, you know.
Depends on where it is.
What it is, where it is.
Generally. So we're worried. Yeah, may.
I'll just say maybe, maybe, or maybe waived upon the board. Or whatever.
That, put in, put that after, just that. Maybe the planning boards have, have, uh. Has the ability to waive this requirement.
Make it by default, they automatically have to do it, but that we, we can waive it, like, you know.
You mean, that's you supposed to waive it.
Yep.
There you go.
Nice. So these are, this, this isn't. These are. Criteria for granting a special permit. This is not the rules of the special permit. This is not what the, the, the planning board will be required to do.
Consistent guidance, right, that.
Yeah, yeah.
It prevents, um. Like legality wise, if we do the same thing, every, we go through the same checklist every time, it'll, it'll protect us that when I.
Does not result in traffic exceeding the capacity of the road, roadway as. Does not result in traffic exceeding the capacity of the road roadway as and may require a traffic study performed.
And I'm, I'm just trying to think holistically about other things in the bylaws because. It's, you know, when you start. Mocking sometimes you have unintended consequences somewhere else.
I say that may, I just think that it should be an exception to not get a, a traffic study. So you have to apply to, to not get it. Versus.
Yeah.
May, and then we didn't know, we had to get it.
Looking at some of the special permits that we've given recently. And I think of a couple of cases that.
Battery storage or.
Battery storage.
They don't, they don't require traffic study. I mean, they get a vehicle going in and out once a month, maybe. You know, that doesn't justify.
Yeah, but then they could apply for a waiver, say, you know.
Exactly, well, that's the board has discretion to waive.
There's not a, is there, it's just part of the plan, so it's not like we, they get a extra or anything.
So that's why, you know, I think, uh, and unless you can find a, a reason not to Kurt, just uh, the capacity of the roadway and may require a traffic study performed by a professional.
Except to provide information, they want to do because.
On the planet board. Required if. Needed.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm really stuck. I'm trying to figure out how to say this in the right way. The monitor zone is in the traffic has the.
How you determine?
Something like in the.
Opinion, with, you know, and I'm try, I try, I don't like that word.
But who's to say? Does not result in traffic exceeding the capacity of the roadway. I mean, that's really. That's really flexible, that, the terminology right there. Like somebody up, somebody who knows what they're talking about has to have that original opinion of saying. Should, should they get one, right? Because it's, it's worth saying, does not result in traffic exceeding the capacity of the roadway.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd be okay with completely removing the traffic study required by professional. I mean, we can require that.
Yeah, I know.
Hard write it in, don't hard write it in there, just say it does not result in traffic exceeding capacity.
If the board isn't shut, it, the board could, it could be missed.
I mean, I, 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 I'll go with, okay?
Yeah.
It sounds like does not result in traffic exceeding the capacity of the roadway. Okay, planning board says, oh. This is a battery storage facility. We're going to have a couple of pickup trucks. We know we're not going to exceed the capacity of the roadway. This is an Amazon building.
Yeah.
Wow, we're gonna have that. You're gonna have to show us that you did that.
Yeah.
So we just say does not result in traffic exceeding and, and a story and then they have to, they prove it like.
I'm not even sure in the traffic study, it talks about capacity of the roadway.
It does.
Sure, yeah, like this road is for what time period?
But it does, that's exactly what they do, yeah. So I, I, if we just cut off the other half and just, it does not result in traffic exceeding and then. Proving.
Considering where it is, that it's, that it's the criteria for granting a special permit, I think what you just said, we covered it.
Just that, just that, the short and sentence.
Objective guidelines.
Yeah.
And they become, they present, right?
Traffic studies even had or increase the volume by more than five or ten percent.
Yeah, and, and you would need a traffic study to prove.
Yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't want to take it out, right? Because it truly, a new board could miss it. Like, it, it should be automatically there to remind anybody that, at least it's a consideration.
Okay. So just leave it as do not, does not result in exceeding capacity of the roadway.
Yep, and then they gotta prove it.
Got, gotcha. Um, any comments? Okay, moving on, section two hundred dash seven dot one D. Um, for those structures referenced in subsection D one A through. B is crossed out, P is added of this section as the plan approval pursuant to two hundred dash seven dot one. This is a prerequisite, the grant of a building permit.
Before, so all that was doing is, even that we worked on above.
Yep.
Was not included in the list.
Okay.
It was one of those missed things when. He was added ten years ago.
Okay, for two hundred dots, okay, gotcha. So um. It's coming.
So is a prerequisite um, for a building permit?
Yes.
So just. What's the wording maybe?
No, the only, that's, that's the way it's written right now and all we did was just change D E.
Yeah, but it, it doesn't make sense.
Is a prerequisite to grant? A grant of a building permit, is it per credit of? The granting of a building permit or something like that?
It's just to grant a building permit.
You know, I just took the language that was there and fixed what I needed to fix, but.
Maybe, maybe there's another fix we need to do there.
But it's actually that handful, which was a, is a pre-represent, representing, or there is a prerequisite.
To.
The granting of a building.
To, to the granting. That's even the gradual permit, so.
Add it to someone.
To the, to the grant of the.
Two side grant.
To the grant.
Is a prerequisite to grant a building permit?
Yeah.
Change that to two, and I think we're good.
Alright. The next page seems to level everything else. As far as planning board having aggression because it's may, 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 may.
Yep.
Yes, and that's, still, I'm asking you, that's all new language that, you know, I've been working with the board, yes, that's, there should be.
Yeah.
In, in smaller project. There should be a way that the applicant could get away.
That's right. I, I was pretty sure that the planning board had worked on that past, past months of years to make, to make it. More streamlined and easier for the small.
Right.
Uh, use versus.
So this, this, this memorializes or a practice that has been happening, but it was never written in the bylaw.
Yep, so. Um, so these are all added uh, to general requirements at the following sections. The planning board may in any particular case where such an action is allowed by law in the public interest. And not inconsistent with a purpose and intent of site plan review, waive strict compliances with its rules and regulations. The planning board may waive the requirement for slight site plan review where there is a change, where there is a change in use or occupancy. And no substantial construction or improvement to the site will occur. A waiver may be gr- granted only after finding by the planning board that the purpose will not substantially affect drainage, vehicular and pedestrian circulation patterns. And any other standards or pri- criteria provided. For hereafter in this section and that sufficient parking exists to serve the new proposed use. The planning board should require an application. Of a waiver of site plans in the middle that show at a minimum included a narrative described the prior use of the site, sufficient plans, drawings and or photographs to show the nature. Of a proposed use and its impact. So. If there's such as a, a home sub route twenty that decides it wants to be a, a small office or something. Uh, and there's plenty of parking and plenty of access. Something like that. Need to go through a full site plan approval with drawings and. Fifty seven, eight by ten colored glossy photos, circles and analysis.
Back and paragraph to be used against. One of law.
So, let's see, I don't know with that. Any questions, concerns, issues? Okay. Zoning amendment section three uses regulation tables, yes.
So.
Did I miss something?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Page fifteen, just.
Uh, granting authority, okay.
So this is a deletion of the zoning board of appeals granting special permits in flood plains as that. The power was vested into the conservation commission. With the new flood plain regulations we adopted two years ago.
Yep, yep, so that can be removed from our.
We're removing that and that um. The zoning board of appeals having authority to issue special permits for altering the number of mobile homes in an existing mobile home park. We still preserve the. Um, allowance that if a mobile home is destroyed, that it can be replaced. But, uh, we don't allow new mobile home parks and so expanding existing mobile home parks are probably not a good idea.
Gotcha, thank you.
They've got a beautiful new one that's being constructed in Sturgis right now. Seven hundred dollars a month for rent of manufactured homes and that's the law after nineteen uh, seventy four to call mobile homes. They manufacture homes, but anyways.
They have wheels?
Uh, yes, and they're, they're, they're on a frame. And uh, then they're supported by.
Center box.
By, by some type of, of block or public blocks. And uh, they fall under the. Uh, mass trade graduation and they're, again, like I said, Sturgis, Sturgis, this is their. The latest one is the one that's just off of uh, Route one thirty one, right? At the bottom of this kelp. They got sixty.
Okay, okay, we're, we're at, we're, we're rattling again, but.
Trying to rub some more off.
Yeah, that's, that's not what we're covering here, but thank you for bringing that up. We gotta keep things moving.
The old people.
So. Get it, yeah, so we'll be here all night if we don't keep things moving, so please, thank you. Um, so some changes to the use table and um, I'm only going to go through what has changed. In here, but that's going to be quite substantial and may take a little bit of time. Um, if anybody has any questions, um, as we go through this, just. Please stop me so that we can address it as we go through. You know, I think we could put lines on this table, man. I know.
That I didn't, I don't know.
Possible.
And that's general code who.
Yeah, make it that easy for everybody.
I know. It is crazy. So then we had lines at one point, we took them off, didn't we?
Think, I think they all went away when general codes format.
Okay, okay. So first change, um, principal uses, uh, one agriculture, floriculture and or horticulture uses, uh. The A, B and C did not change, D indoor commercial horticulture. Um, floriculture establishment, greenhouses under fifteen hundred square feet. To fifty thousand square feet in total on a single parcel. So what we did with this is I think we broke that out. Um, it was under five hundred, it was, it was under fifty thousand. And we broke that out to, um, instead of in all zones being allowed. Um, they are allowed by planning board uh, review. Um, and that's just it. So we're, we're kind of. The, the residential greenhouse is kind of off this, this is more of a commercial use. Thing, so it depends on where it is in each one of these zones, whether it should be, um, at, at, at least it's reviewed.
It does, I do have a question about that. So under fifteen hundred to fifty thousand, does that?
Yeah, I know, I'm both. So, yeah, so we should probably take out the word.
Under?
Under.
Yep. From fifteen.
From.
Uh, definitely.
Okay, that makes sense now.
So indoor less than that doesn't.
Doesn't need answers.
No permit required, yeah. Um, number two, residential uses, um, and A is not changed. B, uh, accessory apartments was changed to ADU.
So that was.
Accessory dwelling unit.
So this section is being covered. Under the, when we do the town meeting warrant is all encompassed in the ADU section.
Okay. Just this, just this, this residential use of the whole. Uh, zoning table.
Let me go back and. Take your word to, take to ADU. Or that family. No, we made some other changes here, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there was this.
Yeah.
Double changes, I guess.
My, my mistake.
Good, okay. Um, so once again, residential uses, uh, no change in A, change accessory apartments to ADUs. In B, C, changing uh, dwellings and two families from a, um. A, a Y. In village and community business to a P, so permitted under planning board. Um, review. That was the only change to C, multi-family dwellings, um, in R forty and R S E was changed from uh, planning board review to special permit. From multi-family dwellings in R forty and R's, um, S E.
Just bear with me for a second, Kurt, when we go back to the indoor. Uh, sort of cultural use or culture, even though it's commercial. That's not protected by, I think it's forty A, section three, that, that you can do farming over and uh. And things like that. As far as in automatic rate, it's when you look at seeds, grazing the crops. Uh, whether for sale, personal consumption, uh, consumption on a parcel. Many sizes, why, why, why? And I, I know that.
Yeah, so that, that agricultural exemption applies to five acres or more. Across the board all the time.
Okay.
That's that forty A, section three exception.
Alright, so if I, if I came in with a ten thousand swift, but uh, greenhouse, I wanted to put up to grow flowers.
Uh, and you had more than five acres?
Yeah.
Then, then you would have, you would have to prove that it is a valid. Agricultural use.
And then that would be why, 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 why?
Uh, then you would be in that exception, you'd just be right outside of my line.
And, and I know, but. For me. The talent challenge has over the years. Has reduced the number of wives in this, in the section. And it's, it's like, leave me alone.
Because we have like, unique, Charlton's unique in that you go in from like a real, real agricultural to like residential and you don't, I mean, do you really want? Your, your, you're all on, you know, this, you know, our, the small lots and then your neighbors get a couple of pigs, like, you know what I'm, so, so it's, it just. You still can kind of do everything, but with a sort of a, a human check of a review, um.
Sometimes it's not that easy, the human check, because then all of a sudden, the farmer who sold those little plots to Mary and Bill and with their, grow their, their family. Now they're in and they're against the farmer, saying, no, we don't want you doing that.
Well, the farmer has.
That's why it's up to the, the, the board now. The boards can look at it and say, listen, you've got thirty acres, um, there's no way that we're gonna, you know, see what's going on in the dock of your acres, you're fine. You've got an acre and you want to have, you know, a, a horse farm and, and so it's, it's, we've got all those, all the way through the town. So I mean, there, there needs to be some sort of level of. Of approval and not just a rubber stamp.
Um, I don't think we've ever done, I mean, farmers kind of, I mean.
Yeah, you know, I, I, nobody's for taking everybody's, you know, chickens away and horses away, but.
People are trying to take chickens, so.
Uh, that's true, yeah.
But not here in Charleston.
No, on, on my gift, it's no chickens, but they're only, it's only good for thirty years, that's all.
Um, so uh, any other questions with, with the greenhouses or can, can we move on?
Thank you, thank you. Again, you know, I feel about wives being.
Yep, 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 and we, we try to.
I'll be quiet.
We don't. We try not to do that, but. Once again, in, in some areas in town, it's, it's, you're projecting the residential people more than, um. Than, than the small business in, in some of those cases.
And not because we've seen, because crazy things go through. Because by default, like they happen, so we just sort of prevent those crazy things from happening, right? Just.
Yep, yep. Enforcement's much harder, I think, but I, I understand what you're saying, it, it, it does seem that way in, in some cases. Um, so section two H, um, one and two family dwellings in a mixed residential and business uses, um. So. I'm, I'm trying to go back to something else that we saw earlier. So in B E P. We don't allow it, but in this section, mixed residential and business uses, it's an S P.
Well, I think thi- this is, I need to coordinate. What we did and may want to go back.
Yeah, I mean, that, that may be something that, that we missed. I'm just noticing now. So.
So we go back to, so we go back to page four.
This is. In the the U section?
Yeah. Page four. I should reflect the same changes for consistency. Even though they've been handled.
Um, it looks like that section. Two hundred dash three dot two. Residential uses. Needs to be fixed in in the other section, it looks. We're off a little bit. So four and four and sixteen don't match.
Right, and I, just just direct me to make four and sixteen match and I'll do that.
Make four, make, uh, page sixteen look like page four. Is that what we wanted? I don't remember what was. Page four is definitely more restrictive. And then.
Yeah, we took all, like, took all the houses and stuff out of B E P itself.
That's what I thought, so make four, make six, page sixteen look like page four. You can do that. And then we'll skip. The rest of this and just assume that that's what it's gonna be. Um. Note changes to three, which is public and semi-private uses, that all stays the same. Recreational usages, um. In, uh, D massage parlors was removed. Um. Any questions there?
Meaning it was in there specifically?
It was in there specifically as massage parlors, which which is hard to, you know, what is a massage parlor? I I understand what the thought was originally back twenty, thirty years ago, but it just doesn't fit anymore. Um, if it's, if it's the. You know, um. Therapeutic body massage, we've got several of them in here, but.
There's therapeutic massage.
Yeah, yeah, is allowed. So if it's illegal, it's illegal and it doesn't need to be in here, it was kind of the failing. The other changes. The other changes is F picnic and beach areas, um, were changed from. A, a Y in the. Um, neighborhood business. A or R one sixty. And C B to, um, permitted does planning board approval. So. It's, once again, yes, we're losing some some wives in there. Um, but picnic and beach areas are, um, for commercial use. Is a little bit more restrictive than it was before. Not that that's gonna change much.
But for instance, Buffalo, they don't have to come from planning board.
No, they're bad.
We're, uh, you know, we're we're we're. We're trying to look ahead at things that might happen that possibly never will, but could.
Yeah.
And that's all, that's all. Um. I'm sure you don't want a neighbor of yours knocking down their house and putting in a public beach.
That's why you have an excavator, just go and take it down, that's all.
Uh, D, the next one is, I'm sorry, it's, uh, to to section five. Um, the flea markets add definition to section two, um. Same section J restaurants, including bars and grills. Um. It was a P under agriculture and res- uh, residential, R sixty. Um, that's changed to an N. So we're trying to keep commercial bars and grills in a commercial area and not in residential areas.
I would love for a neighbor.
Yes. Um, and other eating and drinking establishments. Um, knowing. The two residential areas.
Um, we're deleting the whole category.
Oh, uh, I said, oh, you're right.
And we.
That that became restaurants.
Right.
It's a restaurant. That's right.
If I'm not mistaken, weren't weren't pubs and bars, uh, a a Y?
They were a Y in in agriculture, um, I I think it was changed to a P.
I'm talking community business that was a Y.
That was probably changed. Last time around.
Last time around, so when you get rid of that Y, okay.
So any any restaurants or bars need some sort of planning board approval for for parking and and whatever, just makes sense, it's any business. Um, the next change is U.
M.
Uh, today, this one, oh, yes, M offices licensed medical dental practitioners limited to general outpatient care and di- diagnosis. Um, community business, that community business, community business was changed from a Y to a P, once again, just to. Verify all the necessary requirements of a of a business.
I I again, I I'm there, I I think the thing is I can't see why why it was changed, but.
You can't say why it was changed from a Y?
No, no, but either a Y, I mean, from a, yeah, from a Y to a P.
So, uh, before, this just oversight for. For building purposes. Or.
Guys, the building purpose.
Yeah, so then.
You're talking about.
This is the problem with lies and community business, so.
What's the problem?
The problem is is that this, these, these are uses. That need the expertise of the planning board. To make sure that the ingress, egress and parking and drainage is correct. Not to have the building official and zoning enforcement officer have to do that duty.
Because it's the whole design of the entire site that's affecting, not just.
Not the entrance.
So the the same with business professional general offices with less than twelve thousand, uh, gross square feet floor area. So once again, it's a P, it is permitted, um, just with training, planning board oversight. So it's not not requiring a special permit. It is permitted. It's just an oversight thing. Um, go down, that was, uh, M and N, go down to U. Um, funeral homes, um, in agriculture and and R forty. Was changed from a P to a S to an S P. Um, there are definitely places in town. That could handle a business like that, but not every place in those in those areas could handle a business like that, so that puts a little bit more. Um, oversight or a special permit from a planning board, the discretionary view. Um, and the same for, uh, animal or veterinary hospitals in agriculture zones, there are definitely some lots that could handle that kind of. Business, um, but not all of them, so that goes back to another discretionary style special permit. Hey. And the same section, this is same section. Um, X schools for profit. Um. For profit was taken out. As well as the next line, uh, um, and it was changed in community business from a Y to a P. Once again, uh, uh, little bit of oversight in plan required for schools. Was there a reason we took out for profit? I don't remember. Yeah, cuz we didn't, we didn't care what the business model of the entity is, but just how they're using the site. Okay, so for hospitals, clinics and for in and outpatient care, once again, uh. Agriculture, all sixty, R forty and R S E were all changed from P to special, uh, what, sorry. Residential agriculture, R sixty was changed from a P to an N. And R forty and R S E, R S E was changed from a P to an S P. That covers that section, um. Next section is C communications, transportation and public utility uses. So C. Uh, say J, independent storage areas or parking areas, automobile parking garages for five or more automobiles. Um. Was changed in R S E. And. Uh, neighborhood business from a P to an S P. Um, it remains a a known village and remains a P in. C B I G and then S P and B G, but that that did not change, so. The only change was R S E and neighborhood business from a P to an S P. For. Commercial parking garages. Uh, let's take care of that section, the next section is seven industrial warehouse uses. Um, C heavy industrial, uh, establishments. And we added including sawmills. And. That removed, no, okay, and added including sawmills. Storage of goods, materials shall not be permitted in any lot except for appropriate enclosures and compliance with where for. And in D, we remove saw sawmills from lumber businesses, so, um, what we're really doing is taking sawmills. Out of community business. Um, and, uh, continue to permit them in industrial. Uh, general. So we're just separating sawmills from lumber lumber and building. Supply suppliers. And putting that more in with the heavy industrial establishments. Uh, number, uh, letter H, stone and or gravel processing operations, um, in community business. And I G changing that from a P to an S P, cuz once again, there are areas in town that are community business and industrial. Uh, general. That. Can have, that can that can handle that type of business, but then again, we have some community business areas that you would not wanna see. Uh, stone or gravel processing plant in, especially next to, uh, some sort of. Commercial. Development. Questions? Into that section, section eight accessory uses, um. So this is B accessory professional offices in a dwelling conducted by the resident occupants invited that all parking for all such professional services shall be provided. On the premises where the professional offices are located. Um, in zones. Uh, neighborhood business, village and community business, as well as industrial general. Changing those professional offices from a Y to a P, once again, they're still permitted, it just needs site plan approval. Or site plan reviewed.
Question, people. Uh, or in fountain bylaw. It's been there since the. Uh, beginning of. The bylaw, uh, home business. With no more than two employees. Is allowed throughout the entire town. So. If someone's opening a home business and all of a sudden. It's now in a certain district that what they do. Has gone from a Y to a P, do they, does that mean they gotta come in front of the planning board?
If it's a home business?
Yeah.
Um. What is that, it's a home office? I don't think this, I don't think this.
It's an existing business that they've already done?
It's something. In the town of Charlton and Kurt, you know this by law like the back of your hand. If someone wants to have a home business in the town of Charlton. No matter where you are, you're allowed to have your home business and you can't have any more than two employees.
So home occupation as you're alluding to is allowed in. A one, a single family home with tools customarily found about your home. Does not result in on-street parking and not have more than two non-resident employees. Does not result in unreasonable, unnecessary noise over glare. So they're there and I'm still gonna.
That that trumps everything that's in here.
If if they're doing a home occupation, if they.
That's eight A. Okay, if you look at section eight A customary home occupations conducted as gainful business provided that all parking such businesses, blah, 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 blah. Is still Y across the board except for B E P, Business Enterprise Park.
Right. Okay, that's not being touched.
Nope.
Very good.
Nope. Stay like it is. So you're leaving some Ys in there for you?
I had nothing, I'm gonna give you the score when we're done.
That's it, um, so that that covers, uh, all of the, uh, the use regulation tables. Um, any questions there? We get there? I know, I know.
Yeah, one more page.
Um, we've added definition to section two hundred dash two dot one flea markets, any. Uh, indoor or outdoor place located or actively where new and used goods. Or secondhand personal properties offered for sale or exchange to the general public by municipal individuals or licensed vendors usually in compartmentalized spaces. Um, whether or not a fee is charged for the entrance to the area or a fee is charged to the persons or vendors displaying such merchandise. So. Um.
The the word was, uh. Multiple, not municipal.
Oh, sorry, did I, did I multiple?
Alright.
It's, uh, it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Been a long day.
I have a question about.
Sure.
Question about that. If if these are allowed regardless of whether a fee is charged, why do we have to specify that at all?
So I took that definition from a much larger definition. In a zoning definition book. And condensed.
So there's a reason for all these.
So we we had it in our guidelines, but it was never defined.
Right, we had a line that said flea market.
Yep.
And we all sort of know what a flea market is. But we isn't defining.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so. That's there. Okay, so that's, uh, public hearing for the proposed zoning bylaw amendments, anybody have any more questions, concerns, issues?
Just a comment, if there's twenty-two incidents of Y being changed. To.
In in many different zones. Yep, yep, and it's, nothing went away or some things went away. Um, or but it probably should have, um, and other things just became under under planning board. Site plan review. So.
You guys did a tough job.
Yeah, yeah, you know, we get a big.
Yeah.
Everybody happy.
John, you're really good at posting, um, about the planning board stuff. Maybe we should, if we have a PDF copy so people can review it in advance and ask questions.
Yep.
Um, just to clarify, thank.
Around the planning board site and we can all. Um, anybody that I saw.
Procedurally, this is what I see needs to happen. Okay. You need to close the public hearing.
Yep.
And then you need to vote to accept this. As corrected. Trust me. I will come in tomorrow morning, underlining everything that's new. Okay? Um. Fix those spelling and other graphical errors that we pointed out. Combine. Page four's table and page sixteen's table so they agree. And I will package that up as a PDF. I will send it to Mr. Benson. So that it can be published and I will work with Andrew Golis, who is the keeper of the. Uh, the warrant. The warrant has been published, it's warned. What was gonna happen in my understanding is Mr. Golis is going to publish an appendix. That is gonna have all this language in it. Okay, and that will prop, that will get published on the town websites also. And then I will provide, as I demonstrated to you a couple of weeks ago. Some language for the chair or whichever person on the floor is to make the appropriate motion that says, you had a public hearing. You closed the public hearing. You voted these recommendations and you vote endorsement of whatever the article number is. And then once that mechanic is done. Then when the, when the chair, or I'm sorry, the. Moderator asks, you know, you've given your report. And then you can give a short explanation of what the goal was, so. One of these things. And I appreciate the input of the the citizen here that that did import because this is a tough job.
Good, so, um, last question, any any more comment, public hearing? All right, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I moved that we close the public hearing.
Motion, motion in a second, second, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, unanimous. Um, now I need a motion to accept. The zoning bylaw amendments as, uh, amended. The zoning by law amendments as uh amended during the public hearing. Or make a motion to accept the amendments to the uh. Public uh the bylaws as uh edited during this meeting. Um we have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second now.
We have a motion, a second, uh any discussion? And who's who you have the master copy of change. Okay. Uh during no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your work on that.
Well, we appreciate it. Oh.
Hey Bobby, how are you?
Good.
Good seeing you.
Congratulations. Yeah.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Melas. Oh, here's going to be uh. Okay, so that's that's gonna be pushed off.
Be there.
Um I'll read it anyways.
Yeah.
Um it being seven oh five, just seven oh five. Discussion with Chris Hansen about proposing road improvements on a private uh road on uh Highland Road. So not discussing that tonight, do we? We don't need to vote to move that, that can just be put on the next agenda. That's not a public hearing, so. Um we have an A N R for Hanson, I'm Highland Road. Um this is a A N R that we looked at a few weeks ago or a few meetings ago. Um so by the Cranberry Meadow area, um had some questionable. Boundaries with town boundaries and and property boundaries. I don't know if you remember it right. Um there's a letter in the package. From Jonathan Silverstein. Um. And and uh I don't know Randy, maybe you can explain a little bit more on on what. The issue was and and what the.
Having shown that they have title to the land on the expensive side of the property and also. The fact that uh easier road cuts the property in half to Sassy. By the map would be two separate parcels. One on one side of the road, one on the other side of the road. So John so things recommended to the uh. Advocate or if the advocate doesn't want to do it, we could uh request our attorney to. Review it at a charge to the applicant to make sure that the. Right property is titled properly, you know.
Since it's not in town.
Yeah, there's a question of. With the forgetting the town line, with the title boundary of the property is supposed to be.
Okay.
Should be on the landowner, not us. We shouldn't have to really do it.
So has he changed the plans to reflect that or?
So what's happened is um you go get a minute.
Sure, come on.
So basically we'll be happy. So what we have here is this this ether drive. Okay, so I had this land survey, okay? And the issue that we're running into here is that this this line, you know, again, I've tried to talk to Kathleen about whether it's, you know, and again, no comment from them. This is just survey. This is from what my surveyor found. It's nothing that I changed. It's from the town bounds that he found through GPS. But the first one was rejected because of an issue with ownership, okay, of this new way, okay? Now ether drive, since it's been openly used, okay, for more than twenty years. Has been now, whether it's on my property or not, it's been taken. It's been taken by prescription, okay, so. Anything to the south of that road. The edge of that road has never been opened. It's never been touched. Nobody's ever used it. So legally, on a confirmatory deed, I owned that town line, but this section of the land has been taken. So I have no legal rights to ether drive and I have no legal rights to this land from the edge of the road. Okay, so the CAD file that was revised. By my um attorney and surveyor had stated that this is the way the 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 land has to be shown. I have no frontage on this five P, five B. Because I don't have rights to ether drive. Okay, it's been taken. Now, this one here, five A, okay? Um the A and R is showing up to the edge of that roadway. To the south because the from the edge of the roadway to the north. It's been taken. So what I'm trying to do is create this one lot, hundred and seventy five, you know, feet frontage. The sixty thousand square feet of area, this parcel B is to be considered a non-buildable lot at this time. Because I don't have legal frontage and I don't have area.
Gotcha.
And it's noted on the plan.
It's noted on the plan.
It's noted on the plan that that, you know, so even from my attorney, even he's working in my interest, he told me that there's, you you know. This is no reason to go to court because this is just gonna be an adverse possession claim.
Sure.
They're gonna just say the abutters have used this way for a hundred years.
Yep.
So it's there's no reason to go to court over that. There's it's 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 basically a dead case. So.
Good.
Yeah, it's not about going to court. It's tough. So many research and see who owns the title to that.
So the confirmatory deed.
History.
Yeah, so the confirmatory deed, basically what that does is it it confirms that whatever the town line is now, if this town line is right. Wrong, I mean, I've been trying to ask the assessor. I haven't gotten anywhere, okay? She's saying that it's a legal issue. I don't know why the town or the state would would care. Because why wouldn't they? If it's right, it's right. If it's wrong, it's wrong. If it was wrong, I would just. Have my surveyor put the, I mean, I didn't make this line. This is from the surveyors.
Sure.
So, you know, me going back and forth here, I don't need this area anyways. I can't do anything with it. So the town making an issue over. Fifteen hundred square feet that nobody has rights to, what what I don't understand why that would be an issue. You know, there's there's nothing there that anybody can do with it. They're not gonna claim anything to it.
So can you in this plan move that line over?
Um the the issue is is that it's I I need to get something from the assessor that's telling me she this. My surveys are telling me this is right. I have a confirmatory deed that goes to this line, okay, that was signed by the grantor.
Sure.
Okay, and signed by the grantor. So wherever the town line is, is where I own to. Now, if the town line was wrong, you know. That's that's not really my issue. That would be the assessor to confirm with me that, yes, the town line is still being shown incorrect. This is where it needs to be. You have to show it like the original ninety six plan did. So, you know, I'm kind of caught here not getting clear answers, you know, I'm I'm being told from my land use attorney that I own everything to the south of this. This roadway and they're telling me I don't hold title to it. I have a confirmatory deed. That doesn't mean that I own what's been taken. So.
But but your deed doesn't call out this pin because that's just been set, for example?
Yeah, so what it is, is the deed now, if there was a confirmatory deed that had given to Kurt, basically it shows an eighty one X plan, okay?
Yeah.
An eighty one X plan basically says that the lot was further and deeper upon inspection of the town line. Now. Again, you know.
Oh, they thought the town line was.
The original, I have the ninety six plan. I'll show you. The original ninety six plan. Which is, I mean, I don't, it wouldn't matter to me even if I showed show this line because I really can't do anything with that area anyways. Like, I don't have rights to it. So it really, it's irrelevant, really.
Yeah, but as as a board, we're signing off on that, which is something that may or may not be accurate and.
But if I have a confirmatory deed, how is the town needs to tell me why it's not accurate? That's what I'm not getting clear on. You have to tell me why the town's not line's not right. You have to tell me why I don't own it. I from from what my land use attorney is telling me is that I own that land. But the road has been taken. It's been taken from me by prescription. Now, if there's a difference, I have to get that from the assessor and the building and uh the enforcement officer. If I'm not getting any clues, I'm gonna keep showing this plan like this. I need to know why it doesn't show it in title. Confirmatory deed confirms it. Is the ninety six plan.
Should Jonathan talk to his attorney?
It's already been done. It's all been gone through.
So that's where they thought and these are these two, this is the the line.
Correct. This was the previous line. Now my surveyor.
The new line.
Well, it's not really new. It was incorrect forever. It was just incorrect and now with GPS.
Okay. Yeah. So where's the, where are you showing the boundary of six thousand square feet?
So if if the CAD file which Randy has was sent to him, the CAD file shows that we're not showing any of this roadway to count as area, correct, Randy?
Yeah, but that has no relevance. That's not what our attorney talking about. There's property on the other side of that road. It's property on. Either side of the road based on the old plan that somebody in Spencer could own that land.
Mm hmm.
And.
But from where?
Information is somebody in Spencer on that range. He is providing no information that somebody in Spencer does not own that land. And that land has always been part of its property. That's where.
So let's call it lot line one and lot line two.
Okay, so I don't understand why the assessor won't tell me if this is correct or incorrect. I feel like that's public information. So.
I would think it would.
I've I've even walked down with some, that's all I need to know. If it was wrong, I'll move the line. It's like I'm I'm getting games played. I'm not trying to play games. I just wanna, I just wanna get my lot signed off.
So they wanted confirmation of the state, the state. I guess.
So why why am I being played around with the state? Why am I, why would they care? What does the state have interest in the town line? It is what it is. Who cares?
We've been giving someone a private.
So once again, uh you've got timeline, timeline one, timeline two.
Yes.
If if we have, if we endorse this plan, we could be giving some land that's that's between timeline one and timeline two. And endorsing that over to you, that may not be the case.
Well, the the thing is, is that the CAD file is showing though that I'm only counting this as area. I'm not legally, I'm not legally saying that I own any of this. There's nothing in my deed that's saying that I legally own that. Doesn't say that I have rights to ether drive. It's in the deed. I don't have rights to it.
That's not the only, I mean, Jonathan is also saying that this the road is questionable. He's saying, I mean, there's a full write up of.
What's questionable about the road?
He's talking um. Uh the planning board would also have to determine that the private road has adequate width, suitable grades and sufficient.
The thing is, you're talking to a lawyer from Concord, Mass. He he doesn't know what this road even looks like, okay? These are private ways and they're owned by the citizens to the center line, okay? They were owned by the citizens. Whoever abuts the road owns to the center line.
How much frontage do you have on that that?
I have a hundred and seventy five feet of frontage.
Okay, and that's what you're using for your frontage that.
Correct. The sixty thousand square feet includes none of the road, which is on the CAD file. All I'm trying to do right now, I understand this is an unbuildable parcel because I don't have rights to any of this.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so even even if you sign this, well, I'm not saying, but even if I filed a building permit for this, I don't have area and I don't have legal frontage. So he denied me a building permit anyways. So all I want to do is I want to put my house on this lot. Build a house on this lot. In this lot right now is an independent, non-buildable parcel. This this line doesn't, this.
And you're not counting anything above that of that.
He has the CAD file and I and I and I had asked them and I went to the assessors like three times saying, and this is going back from January dawn, okay? Let me know what the town line is. If it's wrong, I'll have my surveyor fix it. I don't need this land. I don't want this land. This is just what he surveyed and told me where the line is.
And that's why it's just not an attorney to.
Um but it's a town line. It's but what I'm saying, it's a town line. It should be, nobody should be interested in it other than if it's right or wrong.
Right, but our attorney is clearly clearly saying, as much as I, I mean, I love Jonathan Silverstein so much, um. He, our attorney is saying, do not touch this thing. You're gonna cause all of the problems. Let it be figured out and then come back to it.
So.
He's he's very clear, he's very clear about not touching it.
So then a question for the board then, okay? This is my land. How am I legally, right? You tell me. Cause basically at this point, I look at it as. It's A and R. It's approval not required. You have to tell me why. Why you, so you're saying without sufficient evidence of the assessor not telling me where the line is. How to show this plan so I can get this endorsed? That that's all I'm asking the town. I've been asking them for two months and nobody's giving me any information. Do you want me to show the old town line? Oh. This is, you know what I mean?
We're preventing them from building out his land.
You know, you.
We can't prove.
You're not, you're taking my land and telling me I can't do anything.
And I and I.
Oh, I've owned this land, I don't know, a year, but I don't understand why. I don't have rights to this way. Who's gonna? You know, the abutters, it would be up to the abutters to take me to land court if they feel they have an interest in the land, you know what I mean?
This is, you're saying you don't have rights to it doesn't help us because. We we couldn't control you from not using it anyways. No, it's it's one of those things we can't take that into consideration. Just because you say you can't use it. If it's on the plan and it's written on that plan, we have to assume you can use it and and it's there. That's that's the problem. That's the kind of.
Well, I I just feel that, you know, if if it's being considered a non-buildable lot at this time.
And and if it's on the plan and marked on there and there is some question about that line, it just puts it into a gray area. How do you resolve this?
Yeah.
Um I and I agree with you.
You know what I mean? That's that's stupid. I don't need it.
I don't know. I mean, it it seems like awfully excessive.
It's excessive. I just want to build on five A and I'm not coming off Highland. Why? Why is that an issue? At this time, I can't even touch that lot. It's on the plan. You guys are protected.
If the planning board doesn't do it, certainly the assessor's not gonna.
So have you been uh, did you have a title search done by?
We did, we have all that.
But it comes down to assert the title uh or the deed.
I'm not trying to, you know, ruffle any feathers here. I'm. The Z B A said. Well, there's any, I didn't really bring this up, this issue with them, but you know, I I don't understand why. Through confirmatory deed, if there is an issue, whoever's aggrieved, right? Whoever's aggrieved, if an abutter is aggrieved. They have the right to take me to land court. You know, just because you endorse a plan doesn't mean that you hold all the rights to the plan. If they're aggrieved, my land use attorney, George Corinsey, who's been practicing this for fifty years, said if a landowner is aggrieved. Look, they can take you to land court, Mr. Hanson. You are not, you are not counting the roadway as your area.
This is not a public hearing. The butter's not even a wood.
Sure, sure.
Even with, even with all the butters signing off, I would feel uncomfortable going against our attorneys clear.
So but your attorney's not giving a solution. He's not saying that your assessor, your your assessor needs to let. The applicant know if his town line is correct or incorrect. He can't just. Get the runaround from the assessor. If it was incorrect, I would bring the correct plan for you guys so we didn't have to bring this in front of you.
This does sound like it's an assessor issue.
It is. And and my attorney told me, I asked three times the assessor. To confirm the town line because I would have showed you whatever is correct because that piece of land on the top is irrelevant to me.
So and what did the assessor say? It showed me that it isn't correct or?
No, basically the assessor says we will not opine because it's a legal issue. So the state, I don't understand why the state would have any interest in where the town line is. What do they care? You know, so you know, I I feel it's my property and I I should be able to. Build on that lot if I meet the frontage in the area requirements, even if that town line was under there, I still have area. It doesn't, it doesn't change anything. Just moving a lot lot.
I think it's okay. Right, if I be not noted not to be considered a buildable lot.
Yep, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's the problem. We're holding him up. The assessor's not gonna perform a survey and title, like there's no remedy. For the applicant, so.
That's what I'm saying. If you guys give me a, I'm happy to do it. I'm not going against.
And we're we're talking about five thousand, not even.
Not even.
Two thousand square feet in in his total lot calculation. But our but our legal counsel says, nothing in the revised plan alters my opinion that Mr. Hanson. Needs to work out the title discrepancies before the planning board should endorse any A and R plan that purports to to to. Listen, depict his ownership of the land that is currently in record ownership of residence of Spencer.
So this this is understood, but what I'm saying, if the assessor tells me where the line is.
Yep.
This is all solved. You get what I'm saying?
So.
That's the remedy.
So that's the remedy. The other remedy is to assume the line is where.
But why, why is, why is that right without being proven right?
Well, why would that, if it if it doesn't alter your plans at all?
So if the planning board tells me how to show this plan, I will revise the plan to be shown so it can be signed off as an A and R. And I'm happy to do that, but I need the answer.
So if you, uh my my assumption is if you go with what the original, you know, not by what's your. Go by the original plot plan.
Okay, so basically if we use that dotted line.
Yep.
And I resubmit and I give it into Randy with just the dotted line without the road being shown first, original line.
Yeah.
Basically Randy can sign off on the A and R, correct?
No, I don't sign off. The board does, but.
Okay.
Are you talking to the original town?
Correct, and from the ninety six plan is what you're saying. The nineteen ninety six.
Which is this one pin found, that that is the original.
Okay, that that's fine. Again, I'm not a surveyor. I didn't I didn't make this one and saying give him the extra area.
So if he does that, takes another five thousand square feet off a lot B that he makes.
So if he does that, takes another five thousand square feet off a lot B, then he makes six.
Said he wasn't using that anyways.
I'm not using it.
Correct. So it's not part of the, of the area anyways.
So do that.
And then get Jonathan's okay with it and then.
Yeah, I mean, he revised.
The only discrepancy is where, is where the town says the line is and you say the line. But if you agree with the town, then I don't think there's any, any argument.
Yeah, but I'm saying, you know what I mean? You have to prove, I, my survey is proving this. She needs to prove her claim, right?
Then that would take a legal. What you're saying.
If this was your property, would you be upset if somebody didn't tell you where the line was?
I would, I would probably not be happy.
That's, that's what I'm saying. That's the only reason why I'm a little bit.
Board to, to determine.
Use, use the worst case line here.
That's what I'm gonna do. As long as, as long as the board's okay with that.
I don't see a problem with that. That would.
Because.
It's also the road, right? It's.
That, that would take the road out.
Yeah, that takes it out.
The, the issue here is that this road has been taken. So they're saying the rights of anything to here. You know, and again, all attorneys have different opinions. You have to remember that, you know, Worcester County attorneys have different opinions than Boston attorneys, okay?
These land, these are land use attorneys. They work all over the state and they know.
You get what I'm saying?
Yes, I've been, but they, they know their area business very well and then.
So if we.
I guess.
Just to circle back on that, if, if he revises the, the lot.
What I would suggest is give it a damn to Randy. Reach out to Jonathan and say if that line was revised.
Per the ninety-six plan.
Ninety-six plan. Is there, is there an issue with that?
If they were to prove that ninety.
Yep.
So there shouldn't be an issue. If I bring it back with this, this has already been signed off.
Then, that's fine.
We will. Just reach out to. I, I don't want you to go through the experience. I'd rather go, well, there's other problems. I, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, we get that confirmation. If, if A B and C.
Revise the plan back to the nineteen ninety.
No, no problem.
Then that resolves the problem.
Alright, so that'll resolve the problem. So I'll show it like that and it'll take care of it.
Reach out to Randy, uh, let's see.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, can we get ahold of Jonathan tomorrow? Before you change the plans, reach out to Randy beginning of next week just to make sure he's talked to council and, and there are no other.
I don't.
Before you go through this, but there should not be, I don't expect.
So if that ninety-six approved, I mean, at that point there, it's already been reported. It's already been signed off. But not all town, even the town from day one.
I know, yeah.
You came to the right place.
And now you wonder why developers want to develop everywhere. You see what I'm saying? You guys have to go through it to get an answer. This guy's a good guy.
Appreciate it.
I didn't make up the line.
I know, I know, I know. It's just, uh, it's.
That's fine. Like I said, whatever the board needs me to show it.
Nineteen ninety-six.
We'll just go off the ninety-six plan. Okay, and what you can do. Here is.
You, you guys wanna keep this?
Yeah.
That's fine. You can keep that.
Keep that. Wolf, cause I'm gonna call this the nineteen ninety-six.
Yeah, that's fine.
Two ninety-eight point six one.
You want it. So I'll just show, actually I'll, I'm gonna keep this if you don't mind.
Alright.
Alright. But this is the ninety-six plan. So I'll just have him go off that.
And if our attorney says there's no problem using that line and approving your.
It's been approved already. Alright, so.
Mr. Hanson, just give me the body of two laws.
Yeah. Well, no, I'm just gonna just move a lot line basically. Yeah, leave the remaining land. Alright, is that good enough? Alright. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um. Seventy-seven twenty, uh, request for approval for decommissioning bond, that's there energy.
Yeah, take it easy. Thank you.
Two sixty-one North Sturridge Road Solar.
Um, actually, at the last meeting, I was a little confused. Um, the board had, uh. A sketch about making a ready decision on the soil field.
Yes.
Only decision is agreed. That language is incorporated into the decommissioning bond. Which is what Mr. Nolan is doing right now.
Okay.
So that will hopefully have it ready for the board to review and vote on at the next meeting. There were also a couple of questions. Um, in regards to the facility. Let's see, and he did answer what I do it. How many panels they had on it was sixteen thousand. So our panels.
So in the decommission, there was only three hundred and ninety panels.
Right.
Yeah, they, no, it was sixteen thousand.
On his.
Some odd panels.
Yeah, on his.
On his decommissioning. Dark, where he itemized everything out. He only listed three hundred and ninety panels.
Well, I pointed out to him today that the board wanted the number of panels. And also, what was the other?
And he had a price per panel too, so.
Oh, the recycling.
Multiply that times four and gonna raise that decommissioning substantially.
And then his recycler was out of business.
Right.
No, that's.
So I, I. I, you know, I went back and forth with him. Okay, if he's gonna rewrite. The decommission bond with the additional language in it, first you rewrite.
Yep, yep.
Those are one job.
Have them rewrite. Okay, that's fine. So we'll, we'll put that on.
He also had to answer something from the consulting attorney too.
Okay, so he's gonna get his ducks in a row and come back, uh, next week?
Yeah, he'll be back on the twenty-third.
Okay.
As soon as I get it, I will send it out to the board so you can all look at it.
Okay. Alright, then we'll, we'll skip that one. Uh, seven forty P M, uh, discuss solar battery, energy storage systems, decommissioning bond with ZP development. Um, so time to get your ducks in a row?
Good evening. Tom Corbett, Zero Point Development, um. So obviously we have four sites in total in town. I'd like to kind of just, they're all the same. As far as technology, as far as energy, um. And better energy storage and the capacity of that. Um, so the cells and all that stuff, they're all the same. The, the cost to get rid of the system itself is the same. Um, the mechanisms in which we use to get there are the same. So I'd like to just. Review with the board this first initial run at, um, decommissioning. For the lot F site on Graves Road, Service Road.
Actually, I just want to ask about fifty, I just tend to, I think I understood it, but I wanna make sure. You had a number eight hundred twelve. Right. That's for all four cells or is that for each site?
Each site.
Oh, okay.
This is per site.
Yeah.
This is for, so, but today's value is like four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. If I was to go and decommission the site today.
Yeah.
With, with a twenty-year break even percentage of two point seven nine, I believe, or something that that like that is in there, um. For the increased escalator, that brings it up to an eight hundred thousand dollar, eight hundred and twelve thousand and change, uh, total. For thirty years out, twenty years out, sorry. So today's value, four fifty-something, forty.
I thought everything you said, I just wanted to make sure.
This is per site. So this, this decom is for specifically. Project four thirty-two lot F, um, for the map parcel, one seven C lot nine. Um, the other parcel up here is twenty-seven C dot nine one, uh, lot G. So there are two sites on the particular area. Um, but if you look at schedule, um. Decommissioning subtotal four fifty-one sixty, four fifty-one five six six, that's today's value. Um, so that's drawn down from a, a battery recycling value. Of three hundred and thirty-four thousand and eighty dollars. And then there's some miscellaneous like removal of wire, um. There's some site work with the accessing gravel roads. Uh, this particular site's already gravel roads, um. Restoration and seeding, uh, fence removal and things like that. So there are site specific items. As we, as we talked about the other projects, um, like fence line, uh, that could be more. So there are minimal changes between the projects, but substantially as a whole. We're, we're, we're talking the same language here. Um, I do have some assumptions over in the right hand side, just as far as values, um. And things like that.
Yeah. It's a good start.
Yeah, that much, I'm aware. I come, I'm coming in trying to just figure out where you guys are at. A lot of discussions.
Yeah, there's a whole, there's a whole bunch of just comments in general.
Yeah, absolutely.
It has to be prepared by a P E, this whole thing, prevailing wages. And a P E pro- professional engineer.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, or I don't know, yeah.
Yeah.
He can, but just.
Yeah. You know, sign, stamp, the whole, the whole thing, sign, stamp when you get to it at that point. And prevailing wages.
Yeah, well, those might be outdated. Yes, I would agree with that. Thank you for that today.
And prevailing wages should really list out the individual specialty, not like just a crew. Twenty-five hundred and sixty dollars per day, but like what crew? You mean a mini excavator crew? Or electrical crew or plumbing?
With an operator.
Yeah, like, like, each, each one of them, like a crew of one.
Where I got my dollar bill, so I can absolutely assign that to there.
Per individual specialty, if they have a quicker, like a mini. You know.
Yeah, that's where those values come from, so I, I can easily.
Yeah, I'm looking up.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Um, define, so define.
Yeah, define the specialty, uh, times the number of crew, plus the equipment if. You know, and an operator for the. And then just from, just from the top, I would say, you know, you also need to submit like a, a photo. Library of the pre-construction phase. So what has been disturbed? Because in twenty years, who knows what this thing looked like and the whole. Point of the, the bylaw decommissioning says bring it back and restore it to original condition.
Okay, I could provide, so just to talk through that a little bit. I could provide you pictures of these lots, they have piles of dirt on them right now.
Yeah.
Where I can put the piles of dirt back.
Yeah, yeah.
But at least it gives you a reference.
But at least knowing, we can't argue, oh, it's full of beautiful oak trees or mahogany trees. And then with that, so, uh, also probably a soil testing of the original lot. With that, some kind of a recondition. And then that also supposes, uh, during decommissioning, when you're done, a soil test happens.
So.
Because it's restoring it to original.
So soil tests are part of, we are doing those actually right now, where the environmental are happening in the next few weeks.
Yeah.
So.
Environmentally report of, of the current conditions.
Yeah, yeah, they want a phase one. And then I don't know that we're gonna necessarily go to a phase two. There was no requirement of a phase two in this special permit.
So the, the phase one, we'll, we'll, we'll kind of look at it as, as what the current site conditions are.
History and all that.
Yep, yeah, so we've got a base, it's gonna give us the baseline, you know.
Yeah, so you would phase one and report kind of stuff?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, well, I'll have that, so.
And then.
Standard for us to do, whenever, right, remark. The nature of a project in general.
Yeah, and then maybe a line item in the decommissioning, a twenty years later site soil.
Yes, for the decom, yeah, at the end.
Just, just some kind of a line item in there.
That would be handled through like a release process if that ever was to come up. So if there. I guess we can have it.
Yeah, well, I'm getting. I don't think there's any money for the added decommissioning plans, the plan itself. The release process, so that's another one. So maybe also a line item for our town engineer to inspect. And approve the decommissioning itself. After it's done. Well, that would, that would be part of the planning boards. For well anyways, I would think of any. Decommissioning.
Yeah, then applicant boarding.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And, but that's already built in, I feel.
Is it? I don't see it. I, I think maybe a line item for town engineering inspection and approval of the decom.
I think that would be built in with any, any site planner or.
Yeah, I mean, it. It's unlikely you're gonna hold an escrow for it for twenty years or whatever. So at the time of their request of the decommissioning, we probably said, well, we need an escrow fee. For the engineer services. But to hold a small.
But once again, part of the decommissioning.
You want a line, yeah. Yeah, yeah, part of the written out plan. So take me back one more, Bill, if you don't mind. Uh, what was that one?
The, the line item.
Photos.
A photo lottery, just of the, before, a pre-construction, uh, soil testing. Pre-construction soil testing.
And to be clear, phase one, phase two is a little expensive. That, that, that's extended.
Yeah.
And that's like.
Yeah.
That's invasive.
Yeah.
So. Phase one.
Yeah, phase, what are you doing at phase two?
Doing a phase one, there's potential on some sites to phase one, it, it recommends phase two.
Yeah.
So in a site where a phase one.
Yeah.
Comes back is, alright, there's obviously nothing ever happened here in this farm field that's been wooded forever.
Phase one.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So and then, okay. Phase one.
So it's just kind of the, the baseline is what we're looking.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
What is this soil?
What is the baseline?
Yeah. Phase one, photos.
Then I think you're. Things like erosion control is probably a little low. I mean, that sounds like. The cost for the erosion control or waddle or something, but not. Trenching in the waddle with. Uh, you know, a geotechnical fabric and the waddle and staking it all out at a buck a foot. You know, I think we probably need to increase that with equipment. We dig in the erosion, just right up in contractor fees, erosion controls.
Rules, so that's fine, but.
Yeah. And that's, looks like probably the erosion control material itself. And then the labor on top of that would be. Literally digging that in.
About nine bucks is worth.
With, yeah, with some kind of engineered fabric and staking it in every three feet, you know, the labor involved in that. It's probably ten bucks a foot.
Uh, installs both five bucks.
Plus the materials then.
Based on.
Still, you think it's. With the geo, with the fabric and everything, yeah.
That depends on what's on the site plan or. But yeah, I think we have hay bales. They're all hay baled state. I would imagine.
The site work itself, there's a couple of line items here, so I'm just wanting to go through them. The access roads, gravel removed. So then we have to add like the transport cost, that's probably. Three to four tons worth of material, the transport cost and the disposal fee for those tons of gravel. Under site work. The restoration and seeding. Uh, needs to include like three inches of loam delivered spread, so there's labor there. Uh, you know, for the acreage. So there's a cost of loam, you know, and fertilizer.
Um, so this is. Site specific where this is not getting put back to grass, because it's not grass. Hmm, but we're talking for this.
Yeah, yeah.
Particular plant.
Larry's Way, which is.
Right, yeah. That particular site.
Yeah. Yes. But it has to be erosion controlled, it has to be.
Very close to Katy.
And it's actually only gonna be, we're actually probably not gonna do anything besides remove the concrete pads. Cause we're not really doing any site work to begin with. So it's this particular site.
So, so.
I understand.
Future site image.
Future sites.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, so I guess we'll, like. Well, they're all gravel in this town. Every single one.
Yeah, yeah.
So it just has to be. And they're all flat and ready sites. Everyone will.
Dig it up.
So it's no, there's no real D sites particularly in this town. I don't have any like restoration of. It's removal of the foundations and removal of the wires.
That one had Winston Porter way.
Porter's all on a, a gravel pad.
It is now, but was it gravel when you started? Thought there was some trees.
I haven't done anything up there. Um, it's, it's all log lay down area right now. It's all packed gravel. That's gravel from way back when, when they had staging over the wood.
Yeah.
So just the, I mean, it's gonna be seed during. The. Project, it's gonna be seeded outside of the project area as noted on the plans, um. But it is gravel now.
Yeah.
So the post pictures are gonna say gravel, so it's like.
Right, right, as long as it's erosion controlled gravel, you know, not.
Yeah, it's essentially D sites really, these particular sites in town here.
Yeah.
For incom from Larry's way up to like a better, and then, uh. Up in Bill Porter's place, um, they're all flat ground gravel.
Yeah.
And it's really just installation paths and uh, the electrical and whatever else is included with the containers for water suppression.
So then you've got the, the gravel access road removal, gravel.
Maybe I should define that better for you guys in the, like, the narrative piece of it. You have something in front of it, you guys aren't gonna be here. And that's, I understand what you're saying.
But usually Patsy's still on the board and she may not.
I wanna, like, written the record of being.
Yeah, a little bit more site description.
And maybe in site work, uh, you need to include like a sanitary closet, you mentioned in the narrative, but a line item for that.
Oh, uh, we're done?
Yep, you've got the. A dumpster rentals in there.
Yep.
Again, in, so then, uh, the ace, the wire removal, uh. I mean, I think that is going to need, you know, a crew with a mini excavator, right, especially. Um, the underground, direct burial cable even.
Not necessarily, a lot of times they pull them, you know, with wheels.
How deep?
They're all, well, they're only thirty inches deep, both the, um, pipes at max, um, I hear you up there.
And, and I just think with that, like a crew of two, you know, with some kind of equipment or something.
Yeah, I, I put equip below, next to these, I hear you on that.
I, I just don't know if you can get a crew for just three hours a day, I mean, it's probably a half day or a full day minimums on.
You want to address it that way, that's fine, that's, no, that's reasonable.
Probably not gonna be able to. Two hours to do this, yeah. Uh, and then a disposal fee, so you did talk about the wire and some recycling, so. You should at least have some disposal fee of the wiring, or do you just intend to throw it in the dumpster? Like, it has to be removed out of off the site.
The wire?
All of the wire removal, yeah.
That's scrap value. We're not gonna dump it.
So you're removing it from the site.
That's great.
So it's trucking and a disposal.
Well, I mean, if, if, for this case, it's not, it's not being given back, so it, it would be the same as if they did a dumpster.
Yeah.
You know, I don't think there's any cost there to them to do that, and if there is a cost to get rid of it.
Yeah.
They're just gonna throw it in the dumpster, so.
Yes, the dumpster fee is already accounted for.
Yeah, yeah, that.
Is, is the wiring enclosed in two pipes now?
Uh, the wiring will, will be in u- underground conduit, correct?
Okay, so all the end, you have to dig out all the underground conduit.
Uh, not technically with the contracts, um, it is specific to sites. Certain sites, um, something like our options with the. Um, the landowners through the ground lease specifically, allow for certain things to stay if the landowner provides.
Yeah, but not in our decommission, if you add it, you have to remove it. Ground conduit, yeah.
Correct, and we'd, we'd, we'd be in front of you asking for relief on such a thing, if, if the landowners wanted to keep it, is the type of thing. Twenty years down the road, we would be talking about. Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see a disposal fee of the wire or.
Well, the wire is gonna be scrapped. If, if, even if the town is gonna go through the decommission, the town's gonna get money from the scrap.
Yeah.
They're not gonna pay the disposal.
It's not something that needs to be disposed of anyways, like you said, if, if, if it's not gonna go for scrapping, it can get money for, it can go in the dumpster, there's, there's no other try. Yeah, the dumpster is already here, so. So, right, worst case, worst case it goes in the dumpsters, which is a waste. Two, two or three dumpsters full, then it's a couple of cycles of dumpster.
There's nothing else going, at least there. The, the containers go away, there's nothing what else in, what else goes in the dumpster.
You have no concrete disposal cost either, you have.
That's, I have a note here, yeah.
Footing, so, it's, it's like two fifty a ton.
Yep, and.
Yeah, and, and so then in equipment removal, like Lori, Lori's getting to, all of those recycling and net salvage values are. Just have to be removed, what that.
Well, they're just there, that they're part of the spreadsheet, I can reveal the lines if you want them to be revealed, but it just gives you an idea.
Well, I, I think it's.
It's not included in value. It's not drawn down.
I hear you, it's not netted out, but we have to include, what is the disposal fee of the inverter, the one X equipment, the transformer? Like, how much is that gonna cost us to dispose it? So we have to pay for the disposal of the transformer. For example. What, what's the IX equipment?
Interconnection.
So all of those things, we would have to pay for the. Disposal of transport and disposal of all of those.
Disposal where necessary noted.
Like on all of them. So, four, two, three, so six, nine, eleven. You know.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
So it's the crew to remove them, plus the dispose, trans- transportation and disposal fee of all of that.
Now, are these transponders oil filled or?
Uh, they're, well, they have that. Go fluid, whatever the heck they call it these days.
So the, the, I guess the equipment, um, the battery enclosure, the same thing with the battery enclosure recycle fee under ESS removal. And so those are basically eight tractor trailer trucks that we have.
That's all included in that cost.
Yeah, but it's not paying to remove, I don't, I see a. Fee, the battery enclosure.
Oh, the enclosure itself.
Yeah, yeah. So the enclosure, so we need eight times container disposal fee and transportation. Like, how much is, uh, is it gonna cost for us to get rid of a tractor trailer? Size container. Under ESS removal.
Yep, yep, I see it, I'm just trying to draw where I'm going to here.
And the transportation times the number of miles for eight tractor trailer truck size containers.
The container removal is underneath there, is that, or is it else?
Under ESS removal, the, the battery enclosure. So there's some credit, but. We're really not considering the credit, there's, what about the container removal? Nine above that.
Eight of them.
Eight removal.
Container removal and battery closure recycled. For the container removal, that's the crane to literally pick it up.
Uh, it wouldn't be a grain on this, not to pick up, they're, they're gonna be empty. So, so just to, I know, I wanna talk through just a little bit of that piece of it of the batteries themselves and that recycling piece, just while we're here, I've had. Plenty of notes to take home to address, and I, I hear the. So battery recycling, the way that it works is that. The, a company such as McCall Trucking that I have quoted here in this report. They provide white globe, uh, packaging of the batteries, so that is step one in the process of. Recycling the batteries, McCall Trucking comes out, they have all the certifications and all this fun stuff and permits to travel over the road with the lithium ion batteries. Um, they come out, they package them into crates, um, so purpose-built crates, uh, for each specific job. They wrap them with bubble wrap and such, they bring them to their facility. So that's all included in their cost of button sixty-three thousand, um, and. The batteries stay there for up to a week before LI cycle comes out. For their included cost, ninety seven, ninety-five cents a pound, you know, the three hundred, whatever it was, um, yeah. Equating to three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, um, that piece. LI cycle comes and picks them up at McCall Trucking at their warehouse, and they bring them to Rochester, New York. What they do from there is on them, um, so that's kind of all inclusive in that. Um, removal and packaging plus.
Try to interject on, on the back here, it said coordination of battery shipment. To Phoenix and Alabama is zero points responsibility.
No fee, where's that?
On responsibilities matrix.
Yeah, I don't know what Phoenix pays on it, it's like.
Coordination of battery shipment to one of. Lithium cycles facilities. The packaging and all it says is you, so that I guess it's me, me call.
That's on me.
But then it says coordination of the shipment out there. What would you, and then it's.
They, they don't, they don't allow me to ship batteries to them, so I will address that with Joe. And try and get you an updated piece of paper, because they, I tried to. See if I could ship it to LI cycle, but they told me no, that they have to come and pick it up. It's part of like the legality of transportation.
Manifest and all that.
So they, yeah, in Arizona, it doesn't make any sense, so it's probably a copying paste from another quote, so I'll address that with Joe, thank you for pointing that out.
If he could line item like the. Locations here would be useful.
Because.
Locations may change.
Well, they could change, like, LI cycle could not be here in twenty years, it could be somebody else, so this whole thing could be, if there's a pile of paper. It's really isn't.
What's the difference between a pack module and a cell?
So that's specific per, per, uh, like, the style of container, on here where, um. Joe has classified these as a pack, so that's. Actually, the more expensive one on the ball, um, which makes sense, because. These packs are a little bit different than like a module would be kind of a standalone battery that's not inside of a container. The, they're, the packs become part of that packaged unit.
Yeah.
Whereas if you had a warehouse with batteries standing on racks, that's more of a module. Than a, than a purpose-built pack to go in your container, be liquid cooled and such like that.
Hmm.
So more so like an air-cooled system would be considered a, a, a module. Um, which is probably a term you've heard in the past, um, but these are packs as they relate to LI cycle. And their price hasn't changed much at all over the last five years that I've been doing this, I contacted them on day one, it's been ninety-five cents. For Paul, and eventually that number. Will potentially be zero or better than zero, in, in the favor of. Decommissioning of, um, application, because the country needs raw materials, so there'll be more and more incentives to. Get those there, so. Is the idea, it's just starting.
What is the backup power? They have a little asterisk in there. Transportation is toward backup power for recycling or something. In life cycle.
Oh, I see, transportation, and these little backup power, um, maybe for transport, um, if the. Batteries aren't, that, so the batteries have to be at a certain state of charge. To transport, they can't be like just at any old chart, they have to be very near the safe charge, they better. Um, for safe travel, and if they don't need that, that's all.
Okay, yes.
Deeper and deeper and deeper, so there's almost so much that we gotta really try and get here.
So then, alright, ESS removal, equipment pad removal, so those are the concrete pads and footings.
Yep.
Um, I hear you on the cost to like break it all up, but then there is. I, again, that must be tons of material, so what's the? Container and the transport fee and.
I've got that noted here.
How many trucks and how many miles, and that's all prevailing wage stuff. And then I guess the inflation is two point four nine percent.
Twenty year break even today.
As of March. Of March seventeenth, March seventeen, that's the.
There's a twenty year break even. That's a twenty. Uh, we're trying to figure out the decommissioning twenty years down.
Right, right.
I could give you a decommissioning value of today.
Yeah.
And then you don't have to think about those things, or. The decommissioning value of today is four fifty-one.
But that's the inflation rate by the Federal Reserve Bank. At least March seventeenth, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, it doesn't very much over the years.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Now, question, the concrete, do you have to be ground or is it broken chunks?
That's, I guess, up to the site work guy at the time.
Well, would make a difference in the cost.
I doubt it's gonna be ground on site, there's only.
That, that's what I'm asking about.
Yeah, there's only four pads, no ground, grinding on site.
And we check, they wouldn't be broken if they come out whole.
Wouldn't be worth bringing out though. Wouldn't be worth bringing out a project, costs a lot of money to do a project.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you for going through the, the list exhibit, and just a couple other points in here. So, the, uh, on page six. Form of decommissioning, uh, assurance. What was I after here, um? Yeah, the perform, um. And be in a form reasonably accepted by the town of Charleston. So the, the, I guess, first thing, the disconnect from the grid. Uh, is an application to the grid, please disconnect our site from your utility grid. So I'm assuming the owner has to. Submit such an application, and we're not the owner, how would that work if?
You're bringing up things that we're, we can't address today.
Yeah, alright. Attorney to do that.
Yeah, we can't, we can't accommodate everything today, that I hear what you're saying, what you're saying, and. I agree with your sentiment, but I don't think it's something that we can, uh, just bring in.
Yeah, so, uh, there's also something in the bylaws, if you drop below, uh, twenty-five percent of the original capacity.
Yeah, um, go, it kind of goes against my words, that, are you, what are you looking at?
Uh, no, I was just wondering how, like, we have no visibility to that, so you have to. Provide that, uh, you know, a yearly update of what the capacity has been over the last twelve months. In a report, and the report also has to have a. Um, in here it says something about you show us that the, uh, surety is also active. For this year or something, like just proof that the surety still exists or something like that. So there's two parts to it, because there's somewhere in here.
So I guess a twenty-five percent, that, that's been determined by the town, how they plan on, yeah, figuring that out, I don't know, so. So that, that you want, but reported yearly?
Yeah, because you have to report yearly anyway on the surety to prove that the surety is alive and.
Just so, just so like, yeah, noted, so that you. Understand better what I'm trying to say back to you all, um, at the abandonment, they twenty-five percent of the original capacity. Notice by the owner operated planning board estimate in section one stating proposed data discontinuance.
During each year shall provide a performance guarantee. Uh, during each year, so form of decommissioning assurance, CPB six.
You're on six. During each year, oh, okay.
You know, so. Provide a guarantee in the form of reasonably accepted by the town, so like yearly reports that the. Surety is in place or. Has been written to the new owner or operator.
Yearly.
So I think under that form of decommissioning assurance, like, we can't just get it on day one. And then never look at it again, you have to show us that this thing is still.
I thought you.
Oh, yeah, the five-year anniversary.
Do you have that?
It's, it's an update to the decommissioning. An update to the decommissioning cost. Which is on page six also. Amount of decommissioning assurance. As of each five-year anniversary.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, but, yep, yep, yep.
Eight, twelve.
Yeah, the amount of decommission should be eight hundred and twelve thousand.
Yeah, right here.
Oh, okay, we keep, we keep mentioning four hundred and.
Well, today's, yeah, if, if I was to decommission it today, it would be four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. But twenty years down the road, that four fifty equals double.
So in, in the twenty-five percent thing, I think. Is this what the storage capacity would look like over the, like, it's up and down based on?
It's a tough one.
Bad cells will be replaced over time, it's a, it's a hard.
Right, so every year, and this, it finally hits twenty-five percent, how do we know, we have no.
It wouldn't be operating and we'd be out of town.
We just need.
Most likely, so, yeah, I was just trying to wrap my head around how to get that to you and how to make it something that somebody. Not me is gonna come back. Not me is gonna come back to you and give.
Right.
Right. That's our goal here. That's all everybody's goal here is to make sure that when Tom's not here, somebody's accounted for. And the responsibilities are taken care of in this report.
So like a monthly average megawatt of storage over the last twelve months. You, you must do a, an annual.
Yeah, I'll consult with, with the guys that, that operate them. And, and see what they say.
You must be some sort of.
There's gotta be something that they, that I will uh note it.
And the, does this, I mean, if you look at H um. As required by May first, I'm, I'm just trying to. May first of each year, is that what's, what that has to be? Notify the town.
We have an O N M. For these, like to do solar, is that how you would find?
Yep.
Because I know batteries don't last as long as solar. Obviously, they, they last anywhere from five. Fifteen tops.
Yeah, like ten, twelve years probably.
They do. All over the place, depending on how much you.
Yeah, typically the modules would be, if there's like bad cells and stuff, they'd be replaced over the time. Um, and obviously that's built into the, the decision. They gotta come back to you to. For that work to happen because there's gonna have to be oversight to that um for potentials of. Batteries breaking and things like that. You, you wanna know it and we built that into the permit.
Yep.
Um. Yeah, there is.
There is assurance there.
And there.
Yeah, yeah. So Don had read on page five.
H.
There is this.
Okay, and that's part of your.
By law.
That's part of your bylaws.
Not a problem.
Okay, six and G.
Something about, you know, anyway, a yearly reporting of that capacity.
Okay, I could, I could try and uh. Put it himself.
Yeah.
Are we requesting that? And I thought that they just gonna remember to send it to us. Cause that, we have, you know, like what's the automatic trigger? Where we say, we don't have this report yet, or let's request this report.
I, I think it's, if it's May first every year, then we know what battery storage units we have out there and we can, you know, contact the developer.
Who's tracking it and who's requesting it? Is it, is it our office? Okay. So we have to make sure that.
Yeah.
We have that last, just, just because thing.
We know that when May first comes up, that, that'll trigger the uh.
If somebody doesn't own it, sometimes it doesn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, which that way we're not.
Right, making up another.
Yeah, yeah, I'll stay consistent with that.
And if we could also include in that, I think then. The twenty-five percent liking, it would be great.
Current state of health.
Yeah.
What it comes down to is the state.
Yeah, how, how about a monthly average over the past twelve months?
There's probably some standard.
But there is only gonna be too much documentation that the operators are gonna be willing to.
Hmm, sure.
You know what I mean? So over, like, they would be able to give you a state. But at the end of a year, but I doubt they'd give you monthly info.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's whatever the.
Degradation and all that stuff.
So who are the operators? Is that somebody you hire, O N M?
That's the other thing. During that yearly report out, if you could, who's the current owner and who the current operator is. Those are two different.
And we should add that to our standard letter that goes out.
Typically, operator is like a third-party situation um because it's such a strict.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a, it's an entity that gets really scrutinized um for cybersecurity reasons, really, is what it comes down to and, and the liability behind that.
Right.
So there are really a group of operators out there that do that from switchboards in New York mostly um. Remote operations.
Just contact information for.
Yeah, yeah, no, and those are, those are the people that are on the sign entrance to the gate that hasn't been updated over the town as well. Um, so those will be well known. Yep.
Can be a zoning enforcement officer, but also. Be sure that everything's plowed to get in and access is always there, cause.
It's part of the permit too for, for the party agreement.
Yeah, they weren't plowed around town this winter.
Oh, solar fields.
Solar fields.
Oh, yeah, I don't know about those. We don't, I don't even think we own anymore.
Yeah, so that's my, I guess, one of my questions, like can.
Yeah.
Do you sell? I know you develop solar fields and then you sell the leases and you're out of it.
Typically, it's a, we, we have a portfolio of projects. We're working with a partner to develop.
Mm hmm.
Right, so that partner is typically a long-term owner. Um, so yeah, typically, we develop the projects. We're here on the home front. If anything goes wrong, even long-term. We're dealing with solar projects from nine years ago still, because we're townspeople. Um, so we're the kinda like that local community relation versus. Um, you guys trying to knock down A E S.
So if we still have a problem with older bonds, do we still contact you?
To bring them up to speed, it would only be A E S. I could probably point you in the right direction if you wanna shoot me an email.
Okay, and then we have a solar field for sale in town too. I was just wondering what happens then?
Mm hmm.
Coburn Roads for sale.
Yeah.
So what happens with?
During the sale?
Yeah, like the, the.
So right now. Oh, well, so this bond is attached to the permit and that permit's attached to the land. Hmm, so that permit's attached to the, the.
But they'll never shut it off. So what recourse do we have to go after?
Or for a bond?
If.
So national grid at some point will disconnect that project if it's not, like, they're not gonna allow it to produce if their contract's not good. You know what I mean?
I hope so.
Yeah, so also say the Coburn Road come up on ten years. The efficiency of the projects out there, they're, they probably have it solicited for sale because there are people out there coming in and revamping old solar fields or new panels. The efficiency, efficiency is much greater. So a one megawatt field could be two megawatts now. So they're reapplying to national grid to see what they can get for capacity, which today is zero anywhere in the state, by the way.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's some point in time where that project was ever to die. Say, I say die, like, like on the contract side of things with national grid, they would disconnect it. So who, that piece of it would be, then it'd be down to the decon on.
If they.
Abandonment.
So how would that hap- so, so us as a town would go to national grid instead of, hey, like, they're supposed to have a bond and they don't, we shut them up. Like, how does that work? Right, I'm just curious. That's what I'm.
That's, that's the tricky part about all of this, trying to plan twenty years down the road.
Hmm.
And, and this is literally the only industry that any town in the state requires a decommissioning bond for. So it's, if we're. We're strapped with what we have at hand and what we can reasonably accommodate.
And then also, right, if they, if nobody, and it takes an attorney and.
Yeah.
You know, with thousands of dollars in, do we now say, like, hey?
That's what I was thinking.
Hey, owner.
That's, I mean, that's one of the reasons we were looking at requiring a certain percentage of the bond in cash.
Hmm.
Just so that we had that financing to go after whenever a company decides they're gonna just get up and leave. So that was something that we had talked about.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's what I was thinking too. If you think about this, this field.
That cash.
And they just go, okay, yeah, we're done. Yeah, chores. They, they abandon it and then we go to national grid. Uh, please disconnect that. They're like, are you the owner? Or you're not the owner? Have the owner call us.
Well, what if Amazon abandoned their building? So it's unfair.
No, it's the energy.
Unfair.
Yeah.
And it's, well, industry to industry. I mean, Amazon.
No.
They abandoned that, your bill, your millions, millions.
Right, right, right.
So there is a little bit of a. There has to be reasonableness around it, whereas I'm here today, but this project, the project operator long-term doesn't agree with it. Then it is still something that you're subject to as far as, you know, life, I guess, exposures. So that's.
And all those.
Not to get too deep into it. I'm trying to be a nice guy. I'm trying to do this right with you all, but, but on both sides of the coin, I mean. Requiring it for one thing and not the other is already unreasonable, but we can get past that.
I don't get it.
Alright, so we got enough of that?
Yeah, but this in an energy.
It is, it's a thing.
Nuclear, nuclear, they don't have.
The same thing.
A baking building is, is concrete. We can only, we don't want dead panels. So the value's much different. I have to disagree with you there.
Hmm, sure, the, the value of a building is much more than the value of a whole bunch of.
Old solar panels or.
I hear what you're saying. No, I hear what you're saying, but in, in not all scenarios. You know, I hear you. I agree with your sentiments.
Okay, Tom.
Alright, I have homework on this one. Yeah, and um, yeah, let's, we, yeah.
I think it's a good start. I mean, I think it's, it's probably a good quality start.
Yeah. As far as the, the P E stamp, are you okay with that just being on the schedule? Because there's no reason for Jay.
Yeah.
The right.
Yeah.
Words.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, if he.
Just.
Comfortable stamping, schedule, vetting, that'd be these.
Yeah.
Dollar amounts are right.
And I'm not, I'm not making that up. That's in the.
No, I understand. It just doesn't make any sense to me because of an engineer doesn't. Her view is way outside of engineer.
Yeah, but, but they do, but, I mean, they, they look at amounts all the time.
Yeah, no, that's.
That's our, our, our engineer is gonna look at that too and then, then you'll.
Yeah, and that's what I was gonna say. So once I get this to. Kind of like a reasonable format where this is cleaned up some, um, we addressed some of that thing. You want Mike to look at it?
Yes, okay, perfect.
Well, can you also make sure that the, the, I guess, the D C amount, the megawatts D C are always clearly marked?
They're A C blocks.
Well, their D C is, is how.
D C is only with coupled. That's a, that is only coupled. These are, these are A C blocks, which is what I was trying to say about the bylaw and like the language around.
Hmm.
And, and how you calculate everything when it comes down to this energy storage with an A C bar.
I'm gonna look that up. I don't understand it.
They did, it gets, I, if you want, we can chat sometime. I have it all broken down.
The megawatt, I know there's megawatt hours, but.
Yeah, and it comes down to like the megawatts versus the megawatt.
If you release it all at once, that's how we. Versus, you know, four hours here, two hours there.
Yeah, the, the A C is the storage capacity. So the A C storage capacity of the system, D C being the power mover. So how fast you can move that power? Five megawatts? Uh, so this, yeah, it's back and forth and it's, it's, it's a complicated web when you start. Well, we're familiar, right, with the coupled, the A C coupled, the D C coupled uh with the A C batteries, D C coupled. Then they have D C converters that go inside those batteries. These don't have those. This is just an A C system. It's newer, so.
I always thought it was D C and then an A C is the converter. Cause that's how we use energy and alternating current. Why would you go from A C to D C in a battery?
Well, because you're winning solar field. On solar fields, it's D C.
Right, no, but even freestanding, it said when you go from the battery itself out to how we use it in the grid. It's A C, so you have to, I thought I saw in here you had an, an converter as well.
There are, yes, the, there are on this particular. I guess, yeah, I'm, I'm speaking ahead a little bit because the newer containers are A C blocks, period.
So this one is an A C block or D C?
This one is a D C block, most likely going to get in front of you all for equipment change because of the national grid and everything else, but. Yes, um. Yeah, that gets too muddy, so we'll just leave that, 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 that.
Well, I think I was going crazy that I saw it.
Let's, let's save that for a different time. It's quarter to ten.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's odd. Yeah, I hear you. Hundred percent. Alright, I thank you and I will do my homework.
Thanks, Corbin. Alright, next on the agenda, um, minutes.
We should think about having a standard template that has, you know, all, so when, when somebody comes in, we can maybe use this as our first pilot. And then, so we don't have these long discussions for every single, you know, like, there's, and then labor and, and they, and they fill in the blanks.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds better than.
Yeah.
So they.
Self-spread share.
They fill in the numbers and then it, you know, just so they don't miss stuff.
I think that's a good, good way to do it.
Yeah, so we'll use this one as the start and we'll kinda modify.
Once you get it breaking down, even if we miss some things, we'll get that on.
We suggest you follow our tab.
It'll be easier.
That would be good.
And we can prompt that and stop.
Yeah.
Okay, um, next thing, that's a review of minutes from April sixteen. Is it just the sixteen?
Yeah.
Seven sixteen. Hey, uh, any questions, comments? Hey, do we have a motion to accept the pending word minutes from April sixteen, twenty twenty-five? Make a motion to accept the minutes from April sixteen, twenty twenty-five meeting. Here, motion second.
A seven.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Uh, it's. Do I have a comment relative to that? Okay. The, one of the last items on there, remember we got rid of the decommissioning bond policy.
And he referenced it.
Yeah, and he referenced it. Um. Is that on the website or can we keep it on the website and?
On website.
No, it's ever been on the website. It's just the policy that.
Internal.
Alright, I was just wondering like if a new applicant comes in, are they gonna call up the policy or something? Or do we have to tell them it's canceled or?
Because we normally have to give them the policy, right? So if we don't give it to them, then they don't know they exist unless they've been here before and then.
I'm just thinking like, how do we, I guess, other than the minutes, like, how do we timestamp that the policy ended on this date?
We have them, we have it in our minutes.
It's in the minutes, right? Okay, that, that's all I just wanted to check.
So legally, right, like?
Yeah. Okay, unanimous. Um, other business unknown at time, we posted, so I, I.
Yes, the, the town institute asked me to. Ask the board, C M R P C, we use for the joint by law revision. We did. Uh, and have a job, I guess, for the, um, this is a hundred thousand dollar grant opportunity for. To give money for the master plan we're using, we also have fifty. C M R P C is only willing to apply to the grant if you tell them that they would get the. Job of working down to. Misuse of the master plan.
It's, it's, that's illegal.
So I, I understand what they're saying. So they'll, they'll help us get the grant as long as we give them the grant money.
It's unethical business. It's, it's. Don't we pay them a fee to?
Well, I mean.
For us every year.
We got any quotes on, on the master plan yet? Has that?
No.
Did that, has that gone out?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah, um.
The hourly though. What's the deadline?
You know, whenever we first set aside money, it's been a few years now, so. I really don't know how far this guy goes. It's gonna go.
I mean, that's, just, if I've involved taking the ethics training, because I audit this all the time. For them to even have offered that is like not cool. Um, probably something that could, i- i- if they were, are they a government agency? Cause they, we could, they actually could be reported for that um to the Ethics Commission. Um, I would, um, I would slap somebody on the wrist really hard if that happened at. When I was auditing somebody. So I think that, that, just that consideration, we shouldn't even consider it. We can't. I, I get how business works in the back room, but.
This is. Ash me to.
Yeah, I know, I know. It's not on you. It's not on you, but I.
I'd like to see some of the prices come back. I mean, if, if, they're looking for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do that and we can get somebody else for eighty thousand. You know, listen, it's gonna cost, this is, they're looking at it going, hey, it's only gonna cost you fifty pounds. Well, you know, we'll help you get the rest of the money to pay us.
I mean.
Probably isn't a bad deal, but I agree with you. It's.
It, it, it just, it looks, it doesn't, it doesn't look, I mean, it's a great deal. Don't get me wrong, but I mean, it. Can we, um, can we do an R F case for what comes in? What's the deadline for people to reply, like, to send proposals, right? Usually it's by, you know, June one.
I thought you said sixty days.
I thought it said it's usually.
So maybe we can see what comes in.
They might get it, they might get it anyways.
Might be the only ones.
You know, that the town would have another hundred thousand dollars to play with. But I think the end goal is to find the right people to do the job. If for the zoning bylaw revisions, I mean. I was overly impressed.
That went on for a long time. It was during COVID, but it was.
Last time we did the master plan, they did a really great job. They were absolutely, remember.
No, I mean, they may come in as the only bidder to begin with. Um, but did they give us a bid yet? I'd I'd be curious to see what they're gonna give us for a bid first before we tell them we'll give them a hundred fifty.
And it's public record and other towns are doing it at the same time. So maybe we could see whether what else.
Look at comparable towns.
Let's not make any decision on this right now. Let's um. Table that till till the next week.
We can't even make a decision.
We ran out of time to discuss it and and it got too late.
We just say we cannot even make a decision on that.
No, we, I mean.
I actually have a quick thing to bring up and I promise I won't talk too long, but I went before, um, open forum for. Selectmen last week. As a private citizen before I was appointed. And I had a a letter that I wanted to ask the governor to sponsor an emergency amendment. To the New Climate Act. Do I think it would work? No, but it may show people that we're not just gonna lie down and let the state tell us. We have to take more than thirty. And I said, solar or batteries? Yeah, as you know, like anything over twenty five megawatts, they go right to the state. And we have to accept it. Um, so I've been sitting through, I went through three out of the four meetings. And there's other towns that are getting angry too. And I I say, if we opt out. And just say, look, we have twenty nine. We still have more room for growth. Every solar field can have. Batteries. Let's build that out before we say, okay, for them to cut more trees down and make us the energy corridor. So they were gonna talk it over and talk to you guys and um, I'm not sure if. And Andrew reached out, but they thought maybe a meeting to talk about it. But it could be, look, until all three hundred and fifty one cities and towns do their part for renewable, why should it all come here? And we, you know, carry the state, um, and someone on on the hearings. Monday night, she said she'd like to see every, she stood up and spoke, and every town be given an amount. Of renewable energy that they have to take care of on their land.
They can't buy out.
Right, and it's just like the MBTA thing, right? They'll withhold money, just like, uh, you know, the president will withhold money if you. Deport people. So they all play that game, but we don't get a whole lot from it.
So as a board, can, you know, do we need the select boarding to and and to endorse this letter?
It it would be a help rather than just, you know, this.
We could do it as a. Well, that's what I'm saying, as a planning board, as the Charlton Planning Board, we could endorse this letter and and send it as the Charlton Planning Board.
Right, and I think. Reason the selectman would know it. I mean, it's just, it's a, it's a matter of of getting us together. There's, there's no. Knowing the majority of the selectmen, I know exactly they're on the same page with us. We have a lot of solar. Farms and batteries and everything else compared to other towns that don't, and it should be equal and um, but not just, we should. There's no doubt in my mind that they'll support this. I I.
And I brought that up, that we're supporting the vote of two thousand nineteen.
And it's just.
That's all we're doing.
I think it's just an adverb of the process. Can we send a formal letter?
Yeah, it's it will take a letter or do we need to get together and talk it out?
Um, they they were kind of wishy washy, cause I I said I'd like to be, um, cause you can't ask them to discuss it. So I said I have a comment. And then a request and a maybe have it on one of your future agendas and they kind of looked around, should be planning or will.
Can we just reach out to them and see if they'll meet on it?
Or why don't we do this? Why don't we take a look at the letter of the next meeting?
Okay.
We'll send it to the select board and say, listen, we'd like you to endorse this also, and they can discuss it. We don't need all of it together and. Those are two separate, like, the planning board could sign it and have a letter and then. Sure, but it I I mean, I think it would probably carry more weight if it came from the town. Including a planning board and and all.
And any comments you wanna make there, you can make a comment up until Monday night on the act. You just go to this mass.gov and Google the climate act and it has already has comments. Written out and I wrote four. On different segments and many other comments, um, but they're gonna take it under advisement and this is really happening fast.
You can see. Also reach out to our our the local towns around us and say, we're we're, this is what we're doing and do you wanna do it too? Does it add some? Or is that already happening?
Well, I think it's more the the help of our state reps.
I was gonna say.
Towns are almost pitting against each other, like Westfield, just they, uh, Juniper Battery. Rescinded their plan because it's over in Aquifer. And in Wendell, the batteries, they backed out because of something to do with town wells. Because there's an enormous amount of water when you have to keep these cool. So, um, when that happens, I'm like, oh no, they're coming to them. So I think everyone's hoping that they go to somebody else. But we have that high tension line and now we have the new substation on Snake Hill Road. So we have. And and they they have a skip.
The infrastructure they need is here.
It is, and they they do plus and minus. Remember way back, they did that. If it was woodland, they'd take off money. If it's a landfill, they add points and that's how they do site selection. Well, if you're within a mile of the high tension line. Um, you you get really good site assignment, but if you, you know, it offsets. The little amount they take off for trees. So it's so unfair. So I wanna do a cumulative impact report. And just put everything that we have already dealt with in town and and they did touch touch on it on the, um. The hearings, everything we've gone through, what we're going through now with contaminated water and anything we could go through in the future. So, uh, it'll, uh, help us deter them and make them go to other towns. So I guess that might make other towns mad. But, okay. That's it.
So where do we go from here? Do we, do we, do you wanna? Send out a letter to to Jane and have her distribute and and we can.
Sure, I'll send it.
Send the comments back to Jane and maybe send a letter to this like board and say, this, we'd like you to also endorse this.
That'd be great.
Has the board already looked at this letter?
No, she's just gonna send it, oh, okay.
No, I read a lot of it out loud at the open forum for the selectmen, but I got all flustered and I said the wrong amount and.
And then we we, we can't, we can't discuss it through email, but we can put it on the agenda for next week.
And then, yeah, please, please go on and look at that.
We just go through, Bena Randy, right?
It's all part of that same act and it's a hundred and seventy some odd pages.
Can you read, can you actually read it out? So I just listen here.
Other, uh, agenda, the other business I've known the topic posting, um, prospect.
About letters.
Didn't get a letter from. Peter and.
It's all fixed, right?
Yeah, so this this was, he said it was, he said he had it fixed when.
There's no date on when the service was done on that.
Yeah, it's, there's an estimate here. They they say were replaced by my electrician after the meeting, which it was discussed.
Like the newest.
Which is the the same light with an internal shielding to direct the light directly down and the wattage was turned down to minimum, but it still seems to be a problem. This is it. It happened after that meeting, uh, I'm assuming, right?
Like the original, original meeting or the or the newest meeting that's had, that's what I'm.
Kind of what I understood by by reading it. What was the original, original meeting? Back in December?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so this was from December ninth.
Oh.
His message says the lights on Liston Road were replaced by my electricians after the meeting. Yeah. So it almost sounds like what's there are the new lights, but it sounds like it's still causing a problem.
Gonna do a road trip?
Do we need to do, do we need to get, um, engineer out? At their expense or do we need to get somebody out there to look at it and and what recourse does the board have to be able to change it? Well, then. You've got light leading his leaving his property. Disturbing neighbors. Um, does that become civil issue? Or is the town that records? Not in the site.
Estimate question for the town attorney, I think.
I think it's like, uh, water erosion, it's a form of trespass. So it's like a civil. It is, but it's a civil matter, yeah, that's, you know, um. Unfortunately, this this board did not. Dictate what kind of lights he needed to have on there. We we assumed he it was gonna do something like that. But we're still getting a complaint that this is not.
Let me just a phone call.
We tried that. The phone call, we tried a letter, he's, I've replaced them on.
You know, neighborly and, you know. Attitude, maybe.
So I mean, it's a shame.
Has anyone?
I've driven by, those lights are bright. Those lights are bright. They're 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 not downlights, they're not.
Maybe it was after they came.
So, uh, in the future, I think it's something that we should really pay attention to, to make sure that it's it's specified out. Clearly, what, um, what needs to go there and and not. Give these, just these developers the benefit of the doubt that they're gonna do the right thing, cause they don't seem to wanna do the right thing.
It's too bad. You get the local guy and you think that they're gonna.
Yeah, that. Somebody does a lot of business in town, you think that they wanna make people happy.
All right, well.
Um, yeah, I don't know. I don't know where we go. Yeah, I I really don't.
I think we'll ask Mike Andrew to go out there. Take a look at it, you know, he'd have to do it obviously after dark.
Yep.
The one is dark to see if lights leaving the property. If it's not leaving the property, I don't know where. Much more recourse to see.
Absolutely leaving property.
Right, yeah, but if we have our like professional engineer, say the light is still leaving the property, then we have the leg to stand.
They're not, let's do their, but who pays for that?
How about zoning enforcement? Is this something that could fall under?
Let me talk to Kirk before, because it's not in the site plan, there's nothing he can do about it. If it was in the site plan and and it was incorrect. Being in the site plan, nothing in the.
The light pollution isn't like a water health thing either?
No, I know, yeah, odor is, but I don't know about light. It's a good point.
I mean.
Blair, yeah, Blair.
And and does it bother cars? Then it's a safety issue and the police might get involved if a car.
I mean, we could ask them to come in again and.
What's glare then if it isn't light escaping property?
That's what it is. I mean, it's it's.
An obstructed car.
It's bright. It's bright when you go down Route twenty, it it's noticeable. Romans or whatever it is.
Yeah, you come around that bend in the roads like hello, you know.
A site plan, we should look to make sure that the the light does not leave the property, but and that one, we did not do that. Uh, it wasn't a big enough building.
It's too bad, cause it's just the back of it. And she said you could just turn the lights.
Yeah, yeah, I mean. I don't know if we ask them to come in again and and maybe we we, you know, see what else he can do to 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 fix it.
Um, yeah, if he's even willing.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure he is, but you know, maybe, maybe he is, maybe he isn't, I don't know. Like to give him the benefit of the doubt that that he was trying to do the right thing and it just didn't work. To the satisfaction, so. Um, maybe just shut those lights off between ten and five.
And put a timer on.
The Conservation Commission, and I'm just really looking at like random Massachusetts. Issues. Conservation can look at it as causing. Like an environmental nuisance. Maybe we ask.
Could we reach out to Concom and and say, is this something yet?
Just ask, cause maybe it's something they're not really deal deal with.
Talk to her. Yeah, okay, just kind of get an idea. Let me, let me know what she says and if it's something we need to push further. Okay, yeah. All right, so I'm sure it's gonna come up again, but. It being eight ten. Planning board update, uh, anything, anything, uh, just what's coming up? Got a couple things coming up for the 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 meeting on. The twenty first, um, public hearing for Salo Modification Bobby Daycare, um, over at the depot. Um, sounds like they wanna go. Overnight childcare. And I knew that was gonna happen.
Our butters notified.
They're gonna have to be, you know, I don't know, but we, I haven't heard any complaints about anything. So that's. So if that's a public hearing, then then they just will, excuse me, have to be notified.
When you get the, I mean, cause they can't go by what's happening right now. Because it's.
It's just a sign.
I can't talk them, um, okay. Premier Trail leasing. Uh, release sixty one B release on Gold Road and.
What is that mean? A lot release?
Chap- chapter land, it's put in for agricultural, uh, tax avoidance and then they wanna, uh, put it in. Take take it out of self use.
Like a solid and development.
Okay, so what, um, how do I find out what the what? Our role is in that, in other words.
So, um, for sixty one A, what our role is 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 basically to, um, give our opinion on for the town whether they should purchase it. We have, first first, when it when it comes out of sixty one days, the town has first right to refusal for that property.
And we rarely ever take it, but say that we're in a desperate need for land for something and it and it happened to be a really good option. We could. Kind of advise the selectmen to consider the purchase of it and they would go through the process.
Which would have to go through the process of going to a town meeting. So putting the money for it.
I don't know if they ever actually done.
If it comes out of sixty one A, they're obligated to pay the last five years of taxes on that property. So they've been paying little tax up until now, and when it comes out of sixty one A, they've gotta go back. Is it five years?
I think it's five.
Oh, right, right?
Yeah.
We, uh, we bought, when I was on the soccer board of directors, we bought land across from the Beagle Club. For soccer fields and we had to meet with the selectmen.
So that's what's on the agenda for next. So once again, I'm not gonna be here on the twenty first, I can't.
Well.
I can call in if needed, so I can, I can zoom in.
Cause it's a lot of work.
But if you could run the meeting, I think it'd be easier to run it from here, then it would be worth it, sure, online, either way, no problem, you know. Um, anything else? Any, uh? Any last parting shots? Good, welcome, welcome to the board.
I hope it was so much fun, you know.
Is this normal that it goes to?
No.
No, usually it's been done. The zoning was was very long tonight. I feel that for these people that have to sit through it and then.
The bylaw changes where we're working with Kurt, that's a very lengthy process that.
We can, that doesn't happen. Can we, um, can we have? A motion, so you wanna discuss something with the planning director? You can't really discuss it with the whole board because it would be a conflict of interest in in a, an open meeting law. So. Well, well, I mean, so off the record, you can tell us. We can't give you advice, but we can hear what you have to say and.
Well, there's a big issue that is.
I just wanna make sure I. I just wanna make sure I understood what went down tonight, because I am hiring a lawyer against Hanson.
Hanson, yeah.
Against Hanson. So I just wanna make sure I understood what went down tonight.
And I gotta see what he was pointing over there, so.
So.
On the map.
This is what I'm understanding, that you guys. Didn't approve it for tonight.
Right.
But he'll bring back other plans and it sounds like those plans you will approve.
If it, if it meets all the requirements for a, a legal A and R law, then yes, we, we have no choice but to approve.
The only thing I can hear was, what was his access to get to that lot, five A?
Uh, the, the, the five, five A, I think.
Oh, no, whatever he talking about.
So there were two lots he was, we can look at this stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, but that's, I would rather have this in, in, in a meeting than, than.
Oh, okay.
I just didn't wanna do it.
I, I want him to just go ahead and do it and then go to our property.
Yeah, 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 this is, so, I would rather have this done in, in an open meeting than off meeting, otherwise it could be a, an open meeting.
Because just let's give you guys.
I couldn't get hold my lawyer tomorrow morning, he wanted to know what happened.
So, he was getting hold of her about, you buy this lot back here and then I'll take your own lot down.
That's done, done, that's done quite a bit, so, I mean, if you look at this here.
Are we adjourned?
Um, I would rather do this in a meeting, you know, this is, uh, another time. Explanation, if we, if we don't do this in an open meeting, it could be an open meeting violation because we're all, all here discussing it, so.
Okay.
Five B is a non-buildable lot. Five A has frontage on Highland Road. To make it a legal lot, it's, it's, it meets the sixty thousand square foot requirement to this point right here, not including this, so on this end, end of the road. This is the, 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 the road that was questionable, this is the Spencer Charlton Lot Line that was, that was. Um, questionable. His. His, um. Engineer says it's back here, our town. Shows it here. So what he's gonna do is move his lot to here, the lot line to here, so this would be the lot from there down, not. This, this road does not include it, nor is this space on the side of the road included in what would be the lot, this would remain. Unbuildable, cause he has no access, this would be the buildable lot right here.
Okay, so he will access it from Highland.
Okay, cause we were concerned about.
Okay, okay.
That makes sense? Highland Road, Highland Road is the road that he has fronted on. This road back here, he has no frontage on.
Cause he was coming after us on.
Oh, yeah, he was, he was harassing me, area, and whenever I saw him.
Okay, so now we can, now we can adjourn, do you have a motion?
A little bit of time.
Make a motion to adjourn?
We have a motion, motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.